The Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands.
Of time here, it would be nice if we could just vote on it here tonight so that we don't have to revisit that issue at a later date. I'm sure there are some items that we're probably going to go through that I think we can all kind of earmark. Gary, was there something you wanted to add at this point?
I mean, I will say that, I will echo the email that I sent out to the board and finance committee about the budget that was presented before you, reduction from the initial budget process when we started back in January, our expenses, if you will, to get a picture. The budget that's before you represents a budget, well, excuse me, the net decrease in the expense budget alone represents about a $38,000 decrease in the expense side, and on the revenue side. Also, and we can discuss that when we get into revenue, but what's in front of you today is a place marked for discussions. As of right now, what's in front of you today represents about a $400,000 probably 1.1 million under last year's budget. Okay? So, expenses are, you know, you've got to consider the fact that, and I think my email said, mentioned that to you, are absorbing some costs in our local government budget, which are the county tax. Find increase of those three budgets is just under $70,000. So, we are essentially kind of absorbing that our own budgets to try to bring a lower mill rate to the taxpayers. Harder this, when we started in January, February. Harder numbers now, actuals that we can use. Being said, I will, you know, kind of, back on Doug's statement, I think that there are budgets that probably warrant or likely warrant that service. I think that, that we could, as a board, and if the finance committee is willing to, if we have a board, and if the finance committee is willing to make a recommendation on those things that we know that we can act upon today, it would be good because we could actually take that part of our budget, make our recommendation here. You guys can make your recommendation, we can put that aside and leave the agenda freer for those other, for those bigger budgets that need more discussion. So, the goal here, we are under crunch, if this budget process moves along, if we can, if we can put those simpler issues at low hanging fruit, take it and put it aside, it's going to help us in other meetings moving forward. So, with that said, does anybody have any questions before we start?
Did we get any type of stimulus monies from the feds or the state? Nothing at all?
Unfortunately.
We have only two options. We can raise taxes, or we can make drastic cuts if we are going to fulfill our requirements as the Board of Selectmen, rendering the services to the taxpayers of the town of Madawaska. A serious lack in leadership from the top on down, hiding behind an imaginary monster named COVID, has put us five months late with our budget in our annual town meeting. This is unacceptable. So, here we are tonight, prepared to embark upon the exact same process that has failed us for eight consecutive years now. Albert Einstein, the well-known genius and mathematician, has made some very profound discoveries, one of which was his theory of relativity, where E equals mc squared. I don't know if any of you ever used that, but I have never used it, and I don't plan on having any use for it ever. But the same genius also made the statement and gave us the definition of insanity. And insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. Don't know if any of you have ever watched the movie with John Candy, Planes, Trains and Automobiles, where John Candy is traveling down a road going the wrong way, and all of the other people are pointing and they're telling him, "You're going the wrong way, you're going the wrong way." John Candy pulls one of these, and he laughs, but he continues to go down the wrong way. The difference between John Candy's movie and the town of Madawaska is that in the movie, it's outright hilarious. But the way we're going about the wrong way here in Madawaska is not funny at all.
Can we cut it short now? We gotta, we have to move.
I'm near the end. To make mistakes is totally acceptable, but to repeat mistakes is unacceptable. We need to learn from our mistakes. As a newly elected official, I will stay true to my oath of office, working for the best interest of the taxpayers and cooperating with my fellow officials for the best interest of our threatened community that we love, a place we love to call home with great pride. I know from 13 years of successful business operation that when the lean days come, it is not time to be spending. I have my personal thoughts on how to proceed from this day forward, but I am only one of five. I do not support the process that we are about to embark. This very process has failed us repeatedly for years, but we persist on driving down the same old road. Again, I will work with my fellow officers for a goal that will be in the best interest of the taxpayers of Madawaska. My stand is not movable. I pledged to remain respectful, but firm in please remember, the taxpayers have the final say so at town meeting. Please be there. Thank you.
Any, any, any other comments before we get started? All right. Let's start with our Department 100, the governing body.
No, we're going to go with the article, Article 2. We tried to place these for
I don't have a copy.
Our agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry. Okay, we consider Department 500, Public Works Budget, 500.
So, trying to recap before we, for the board members who haven't been part of the process yet, the way that we run through, our finance committee members have gotten a chance to see how it works, we go through the budgets line by line, each department head is here to speak on behalf of their budget. They will make explanations where they think, you know, there might be, there's probably going to be some questions. They are here to take your questions. Most of the time, they have the answers. If there are answers that they cannot make for you, we will get back to you, we'll flag, we'll flag that line item for future discussion. So, it's a process that worked well. And with that being said, Kevin Dubey is here to speak on behalf of his budget, and we can start down through, if you will.
Do I go line by line, or just?
We're gonna go, we're gonna go down line by line. I will start with the salaries for you, Kevin, and you can talk about your operating expenses. So, as, as you see here, we are flat funding our salaries. There are no COLA increases or merit increases for, for department employees. And if you look down, what trends below the salaries and wages are the benefits, main state retirement, health insurance. Health insurance has, and as for all departments, the, the health insurance that we have is with MMEHD, Main Municipal Health Trust. They set their rates on a calendar year, we are on a fiscal year. So, we budget in, when they tell us what they have for projected increases, we budget that in six months, for six months of our business year, the last six months, not a whole year. So, we are projecting a 10% increase from, from the MMEHD on the health insurance, and of course, the social security and the Medicare numbers follow the payroll from above. So, salaries and wages are flat from last year at $416,231. There are nine full-time and one part-time employee there in that department. Main state retirement, the town's contribution to main state retirement is $42,039. Health insurance, towns, the town's contribution to the employers, to the employees' share of health insurance is $157,500 for that department, $25,806 for SSI, the social security, and $6,035 for Medicare, for total benefits of $231,381. Any questions?
Does the town pay the medical insurance to the employees in full?
The town pays 100% to the employee, pays 60% for the, for the family, and if an employee opts out, and we have two plans that we offer, and if an employee opts out of the plan, they don't want to, they elect to not, we pay $300 a month stipend back to them for not participating in the, in the in the plans.
Have we ever checked with other communities what their policy is, what their contribution is to their employees? I'm just wondering, because I know of very, very few places that pay medical insurance in full. And I'm just wondering if
It varies. I can't tell you specifically. It depends by community, depends by community size and community budget. I think that it's important to remember that insurance and benefits and salaries and wages all play, are something that evolve over time. Okay? So, there are municipalities who probably pay less in their benefits to the, for the employees, but, but the opposite of that would be, they probably pay more per hour. I'll give you an example. The ambulance department, we pay their health insurance. We have a good, we have a good retirement plan for them. They could probably make five, six bucks more an hour working for ambulance service in Fort Kent, but they're not going to have the benefits that they do here. So, you've got to look at the whole picture and not just, you've got to contrast their benefits to what they're making per hour in their salaries and benefits.
How part-time employees, do they get any benefits?
Part-time employees are, can get half, half the benefit. So, they're, Carol, do you remember off the top of your head?
I think we only have one employee that's part-time.
Yep, go ahead, Lori.
I know that Manon and I have had discussions about this. I think then we're kind of all on the same page. I know at least one of the finance committee people, we all kind of looked at, at this. I, I've written a lot of numbers down in the last couple of months, and the only thing we do have to be mindful of, and it is something we can address as a whole, because it's not just Public Works, it's, you know, the whole, is that there would be departments that we would then need to adjust wages. So, while there could be some savings there, you'll have to, or you're going to lose people that are trained for specific things. I'm, I'm on the same, nobody's ignoring you. Well, I'm not. Maybe everyone else is, but we're, I think our minds are kind of the same. It needs to be looked at as a whole package.
Okay, but as we start, we are at the very beginning of all of this. Do we have a goal in mind? Are we looking to make any cuts, or are we just rubber stamping last year's budget?
Well, if we're talking benefits right now, I mean
No, as a whole.
Well, as a whole, we have to discuss it as a whole. We can't discuss it in, in one budget. We have to discuss it with every budget. We have to have everybody here to discuss that.
Yes, but as selectmen, are we to have in our mind that we need to start trimming off some of the fat?
Well, I mean, I'm not arguing with you at this point. All I'm saying is if we're going to do that, if we're going to address that, then that's a whole other issue. You know, if we're going to discuss budgets, I mean, benefits, then, then we have to start looking at bringing everybody here, all of the departments, and, and they have a say in, in their benefits. We can't just tackle one.
I, I think that if you're going to have, if you're going to want to have a conversation about health insurance benefits, you've got to keep two things in mind. The employee, there is an open enrollment period that we have to follow. So, and then there is, they have to be given the opportunity to change plan if it's, if it's having a financial impact on them. Number two, if we're going to have a discussion about health insurance benefits, then I think that has to be in a discussion in and of itself with giving our valuable employees the benefit of being here as a whole, because they've all dedicated their careers to this town, and I think we owe it to them so that they can come here and represent and take, and listen, you can hear from them directly, not through me or one department head. You can hear from them, they can hear from you directly, what your thoughts and concerns are, and they can likewise share theirs with you so that everybody's making an informed decision here, a fully informed decision. So, I think that health insurance, if it is the will of this board to take a look at health insurance and, and employee participation rates in there, then make that statement, and then let's plan on having a meeting and affording our employees a due diligence to have the opportunity to sit down with this board.
I'm, I'm not looking specifically at, at the medical insurance coverage for the employees. That was just one question on one area. If there's something I'm not getting, please enlighten me. But when this entire process is done from A to Z, are we looking to cut the total budget by any certain amount, or are we just reviewing this? That's, that's my question.
My, Lori's got to, will answer that. My budget, this budget here, and the department's budgets, we've been asked to save as much as we can and maintain services, and that's what this budget does. Okay? So, if there are, if, if the board is of the mind, if the majority of the board is of the mind that they want to look for more, then they need to tell us what they want us to look for in those cuts. And if it's, what would it, what would we save if we ask the employees to pay 10% of their health plan? What would that number look like? We're going to go to the drawing board, we're going to take a look. If we're going to ask a particular department to cut a service, we're going to have, ask them to take a look at what that, what impact that would have and what it actually looks like from a dollar figure. But, you know, in my mind, it's a policy decision of this board. Right now, to go be below this, we're looking at, at cuts to services somewheres, or programs. And, and this budget as presented right now does not do that. It, it's less than last year by about $38,000 maintaining services. So, it's the will of the board.
So, are you saying that we don't have the money that we need? Is that what you're saying? Or we have a surplus? I didn't quite follow that.
Can, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Lori.
So, so here's, Dana, I understand, I understand where you're going 100%. You and I have this discussion. I look at budgets a whole different way than this, and when I first came on board, we had a lot of conversations about this, because for me, this was just, you know, I, in my head, I say, okay, we have this, we have $6 million. We're going to start with our priority on top. We're going to go down to the, to the wants and the things we, we could do without, and we're going to fund from the top going down. And that's what you do in, in a household, hopefully, or in, in a business. In the town, these guys give us the budget. This is their wish list. This is what they need to run their department, like Gary says, in the way that they've been running it already, and provide the services that they're providing. This first couple of runs through, in my head, and if I'm wrong, correct me if you guys think different, but we're going to go through these line by line. We're going to give them a chance to explain what the number means, what it's for. And then, we can go back as a group and say, if we're not satisfied with where we are at the end, which is about a mill decrease so far, a little more than that, I've got a bunch of minuses and X's on all my paperwork, and I have suggestions for different things, but we can go back as a board and say, we're going to cut 5% across the board, or we're going to cut, you know, I know 10% was thrown out at me, which is devastating for some of these departments. So, nobody's sitting here, well, I'm not for sure, sitting here saying, this is what it is, and this is what we're going to stick with. And when I said, you know, I'm looking at benefits too, like, I'm looking at it like, open enrollment is November 15 to December 15. So, we got to remain status quo, to be fair, until then, and then how much are you really going to save? Because then you've got departments you have to give a raise to. Those are all numbers we have to tackle as a whole together, and this is not going to happen with these discussions tonight. I don't know if that helps you. I, in my mind, I, I don't feel like a mill is enough, but as we go through, there are things that I've seen, and one particular I questioned Gary about today, that we don't need on here. So, we can, you know, because there was money left from last year that didn't roll over, and so, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying like, oh, let's just pass this, and it's all good. But we have to understand what each number is, and then we can, I don't know. Does that help?
It does help, but, but my understanding of any budget, be it in your personal home, for the town, personal business, that you start at ground zero and you build from there. All right. What's priority? Well, in this area of the country, your fuel costs for, for heating of your buildings. Then you go to your insurance, and you build from there. Governor Lepage ran his budget like that, and he's the only governor that's left the sum of money to the state, to what he did.
Dan, I understand, Dan, but, but, but at this point, I mean, we need, what we're doing is we're, we're looking at this budget right now.
This is a learning process.
It's not, we're, we're not, you know, I think we all understand how a budget works. I mean
Well, I have a question about that.
So, at this point, do we have anything else to say? Gary, did you have anything?
I just want to, I just want to make a point of clarification on, on previous administration, state administration, and ready day funds. And I want to make a point, which is a very important point, and it's something that is very, very impactful on state, local municipalities like Madawaska. Revenue sharing in the state of Maine has been rated by the state of Maine over the last decade. It started before Mr. Lepage, okay? And that continued. Madawaska at its peak was getting about $800,000 of revenue sharing a year to a low of just three years ago of $237,000. Okay? And through our advocacy, through the legislative politics committee that I sit on, and MMA, and, and hounding our, our elected officials in Augusta, to get revenue sharing funded back to 5%, as is statutory required. Okay? We went down to 2, 2 or 2.5% of, of sales tax. Okay? And so, the town of Madawaska, I, I think, I, I, if you would just bear with me for one second, I want to see if I can paint a picture for this town, for you folks, what happened over a decade. Okay? The mill, the, the financial hardship of the mill, the decline of paper, the recession of '08 through, through 2010, the slashing of revenue sharing. All that time, the town's mill rate didn't go up. They stayed, the school was an expectation that the school and the town would absorb. And the gate, and the mill got a reduction in taxes, and the town didn't increase in their tax bill, and the town maintained the mill rate, all while receiving less money from the state of Maine. You can only imagine for a second that the services that we provide, that are also essential, cost money to run, and where do we cut? We cut capital, we cut funding equipment, we cut roads, because that's where the big money is. And so, I, I think it's important to know that revenues are coming back up. Okay? That it, it's not fair to say things like that, okay? Because this town has taken a hit, like many other towns, on revenue sharing that has had a significant impact on town budgets for a decade, okay? We fought so hard to get this back, and we're, and we're making, we're making progress. And COVID slapped us in the head, and, and we're still better than last year for revenue sharing. So, I, I wish we could just do our, our budget process here and leave the state and federal politics out of this. This is us, this is our town. We have a job to do here, and what's going on elsewhere is nothing to do with Madawaska. We can control what we control right here. Thank you.
Well, if, 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 if we're gonna leave out all the political, whatever, at the state level, let's build our budget disregarding revenue sharing, and build our budget on what we know is coming in, and not something that Santa Claus is gonna bring to us.
I'm gonna make a quick comment with that, Dan. When you say that, you're, you're, you're actually saying that I wanna raise the town taxes. You are actually saying, yes, you are. You're saying that we are, we're not gonna consider the revenue sharing, which is really what's, what's reducing our taxes. And if you're saying, I'm not gonna count that, then all of a sudden, you do have a shortfall. You are gonna have to raise taxes.
Only because we have overspent.
Well, that's, that's an opinion, Dan. And, and yes, that's an opinion, yes, it is. It's an opinion at this point.
Okay.
So I, I don't wanna go any further with this.
Okay.
But at this point, that's what you're saying. All right, any other issues on this article?
Well, we're going through Kevin's budget, so Kevin, if you would, line by line, please.
Okay, I just wanted to add that the insurance from last year to this year in our department was $6,481 increase. It wasn't specified here, just to let you know. Next is operating expenses. State auction, we cut that out a couple of years ago. Books and periodicals stayed the same, it's been the same for quite a while. Safety equipment and clothing, $3,000 hasn't changed. Contracted services went down $5,000.
Can you remind me what those were?
As far as?
What other contracted services?
Contracted services are the hollow river gravel, snow, anything that we contract. We rent equipment, there's stuff to do, work. Next is employee physicals, $1,200. Next is the parking lot lease, is $1,400.
I can elaborate on that. The parking lot lease, the town has a two, a lease agreement with Ann Daigle for the parking lot behind the funeral home, behind the town office. And that, and that, historically, the story on that was that provided additional parking for, for businesses and employees in the town. That is a year-to-year lease. We had, prior to me getting here, the lease had been renewed with, with Ms. Daigle. The town has an option on that for right of first refusal if the town wanted to purchase or she wanted to sell. It looked like it was gonna sell last year, we were approached for, to admit for an offer. The board decided then that they weren't interested in the parking lot. So we refused, and we thought the sale went through. But in fact, we thought there was somebody else interested in the property, I failed to mention that. But in the end, there was no sale, and we still have one year left in this lease agreement. So we are contractually obligated for this year, for that parking lot lease agreement. And the board, it is up to board in future years whether or not they wanna continue to utilize that.
Okay, next is license permits and certifications, $1,000. And that's for our gravel pit permit, and then our permit to haul gravel from the river and other little permits. Postage, 200, or 100. Printing and advertising, 500. Travel and training, 2,000. Next would be office supplies, is 750.
Kevin, if I may? Because, you know, there are people listening too. If you would, at, at the bottom of that, like department of 35, that section 35, just kinda list what the grand total for operating expenses in that section and reflect back on what it was last year. For instance, your, your bottom line here is $64,400.
Last year was $69,650. This year is $64,400. Next would be office supply, 750. General supplies, 30,000. Janitorial supplies, 2200. Street supplies, 9,000. And that stayed the same since last year and quite a few years before then. Next would be, and that's for $41,950. Next would be electricity, 7,500. Telephone and internet is 3,500, stayed the same since last year. Sewer is 1,340. It's gone up $300 since last year, but that's due to increase of water usage at the garage. Next would be heating fuel, last year was 17,000. This year, they must've got a better rate, because it's down to 12,000.
Oh, Kevin, I'll elaborate for you on that. We lucked out, when we went out to bids for heating oil, the town of Madawaska and the school and the water district combined, purchasing power, and we do an RFP to the heating dealers locally. We put out the RFP right before the Saudis went into that, that price war with OPEC. And the price went really, really down, the day that we locked in was the best day. And so we, we ended up locking in at a dollar 74 per gallon. And so, we benefited from that tremendously. That's an example of having a hard number that we didn't have before.
We still have the, the same, the same heating, the same furnace over there.
Yes. But now, since we spoke the last time, our heat exchanger between the bus garage and the town garage, the bearings have all let go, and it's, it's about to fall off, it's all rotted out. So I've shut down that section, and we've left it like that. We're not heating right now, and we don't have hot water. So we're just getting by until we figure out what we're gonna do with it.
Okay.
Other than the buses in that area of the garage, is, is there any justifiable need of heat in that? Do you people work on equipment in that portion of the building?
I've got three bays that are plows and the loaders parking, and the last two are the school departments.
Does the school department furnish anything toward that?
No.
Well, I believe they should, if they want heated buses. Other than that, I think we could leave their buses right up front here.
I, I've mentioned it, we, I've tried, you know, to work together with that, but.
That's something we need to look into.
Okay, so moving on, next would be water fees, 1,600, that stayed the same. So our overall went down, it was $25,940. Last year was $30,640. So we went down probably about at $4,000 on that one.
And your utilities.
Yep, utilities. Next is minor equipment, $1,000, stayed the same. Repair equipment is $1,000. $2,000 is the total for that one, that stayed the same. It's been the same for quite a while. Next is vehicle equipment, gas and diesel, is $70,000. It went down $5,000 since last year. Next would be our repair account, is $70,000. It's stayed the same since last year. So our overall account total is $140,000. It went down $5,000 since last year. Next is general maintenance, sand and gravel, $30,000. It went up $10,000. But what happened was, is we used to haul it from the river. And we did a cost analysis, and it was costing a lot more to haul it from the river than it was to buy it screened and deliver it to the garage. So if you look on our fuel, I figured out that it costs us $5,000 of fuel and oil to go to the river, prepare, hauling and repairing the road, and washing all of the US Route 1 and all that maintenance. So we actually save about two weeks of work, and it's a lot better for us because we can do something else. And it's a lot cheaper in cost.
I commend you for figuring that out and implementing that.
Thank you. Next is chemicals, which is salt, and the other account into our road reserve.
Gary, is that, I, okay, is that, that, is that the 264 that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think what we'll do-
Sorry, I know I've asked some of these questions already before, but there's some that I couldn't find.
My, my, what I was gonna do, Laurie, is after Kevin was done with his budget, I was going to basically ask you guys to take a look at your, the capital budget, where he has project reserve money in there. In the past, Kevin's paving line was, was out, was basically somewheres in the vicinity of, well, you can see it, was 350. And I think I explained this before, I'll explain it again. Oftentimes, when we initiate a project, it's like paving or what, for instance, we incur inspect, and, we incur expenses in this fiscal year or in the fiscal year, and we have to end up paying for them in the next, and the auditors, we can't, once we close out the end of the fiscal year, we can't pull expenses back, okay? That year is gone, it's closed. And so, a couple of things, just to make it easier for, to satisfy that concern, and also by taking those larger projects, like paving, like $100,000 contracts and, and projects of that nature, or like a $50,000 color replacement on a brook somewheres, those are considered capital outlays, capital projects. And it shouldn't really appear in an operational budget, okay? It should appear in the capitals budget. And when you budget to capital, it's a reserve account, it's for the same purposes. But it goes before the board, if it's approved to be funded for road project reserve account, for instance. The taxpayers will ultimately approve it at a town meeting, or not. If, if they do, the board of selectmen will be the trustee of that expense account, no matter what the fiscal year. So they can tap into that. Kevin's gonna come to a board meeting, he'll make it aware that it's like, I, I need $25,000 for something that I didn't anticipate for a road project or emergency, road-related. Can I, can, can we ask the board for some money out of the road reserve? Absolutely, we put it on an agenda, the board will decide whether or not they wanna fund that project out of that reserve account. So that's how that changed there. It's, it's, it was flat, it was in an increase in taxes or a decrease. We took what is a budgeted amount, because what happens in the budget, in these department budgets, what's left unspent at the end of the year rolls to the undesignated fund. It's gone, it's gone in the sense that, you know, you have to go back to the taxpayers and ask to be able to use that money. And so, that's why it makes it hard to pull those project expenses on a closeout fiscal year for projects that Kevin has. It started in June, for instance, the beginning of June, but we only get the bill, you know, in, in July.
Who makes the decision about excess funds or money left over that that rolls over to the undesigned?
That's, that's how it is, that's a process-
No, no, that's what I'm asking. Who makes that decision? Who, who decided that? And the reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking, you take like Kevin and his group. These people work hard, they work long hours, especially in the wintertime. They, they try to save, they try to cut, they cut corners. I've seen a couple of their projects in the shop that they saved this town thousands and thousands of dollars. So, what kind of incentive does it give these people to go that over and beyond if their savings is gonna go into a slush fund?
Right. So, to answer your question, and I appreciate that, typically, if there's no, everything in the town's business budget, if you will, is defined by an article, there's something that enables that activity to take place. If it's, if it's public works budget. The board could potentially, with the permission of the taxpayers through an article in the warrant, the town meeting warrant, have language that would in effect say, shall the voters of the town of Madawaska authorize that the monies left over in the department's budget, like Kevin's for instance, roll over into a, an equipment reserve account or a road repair reserve account? And that would prevent that money from falling out into the undesignated fund, okay? But that would have to be a reoccurring article every year. It doesn't care, it doesn't carry forward. It's the will of the board at the time. And if it's the will of the board to have language like that, we can certainly put an article in the, in the warrant that would, that would do that. And ultimately, the taxpayers would-
That's been a discussion prior, and, and we've addressed that, and, and we know that that's an issue. Laurie, I mean, any, any comments on that, on that issue? I mean, I know-
Well, I, I agree, like, I have that in my notes too as, as part, like, I'm, there's some of this stuff I'm not saying, because we already have talked about it, or, or I thought, you know, we're, let's get through all the lines and then we'll discuss. But I think he has more than $80,000 that fell into the general fund, which really, really helps the town, but yet they, they need that money. Like, they could fix the furnace, and they could do things that they need to do with that money. So my intention at some point is, you know, to make a motion that we do just that for. But then we have to look at the ramification and which departments that we wanna do that with, if, if it's gonna be more than-
Would this be time, would, would this be a, a, a good time for us to make that motion?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think that we work on the budget.
Yep.
And once we, you know, once we get through this, as I'm, we're working on this, I'm gonna be working on the warrant for the town's business. Obviously, there's a potential interest that we do something like that. So what I'll do is I'll come up with some language. But when, once we get to a point that this board has weighed in on all the budgets.
Yep.
And the finance committee has weighed in on all the budgets, then we're ready to go to town meeting, okay? So, but we need to have a board approve the town meeting warrant. And that's where, through discussions with you like this, I will insert some language into an article to do that. And ultimately, you guys will look at that and say, I like this warrant, or this is something I think we should change, or we should add something more, whatever. But at the end of the day, the board will set the warrant for the annual town meeting and all the articles of business.
As we go, I don't know if you're making that on your list, Dan, but I mean, if we make, if we know each item that we're discussing that we wanna make sure gets on the warrant, then we can come up at the end and say, okay, well, here's, here's our list, let's discuss them, maybe we can have a meeting just for that, and-
I just don't wanna see this one slip through the cracks. I absolutely want this on the warrant and have this changed. To give an incentive to-
Where we say, well, anything in the sand and gravel goes into this reserve fund for vehicles. We wanna make sure that we do it on something that doesn't cut the services to the public just because we wanna save up for a vehicle next year. We wanna make sure that we word it correctly so that they don't have the ability to take, to steal from the sand-
Interesting, interesting point.
Pay for the truck.
Yep, very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kevin would never do that.
I know Kevin wouldn't, but-
I just need to make that point.
Yeah.
It's just gonna be for all the partners. Are we gonna have slush funds for every partner? That's a lot of type of taxpayer money.
Well, I think that's a, it's not a slush fund, but I think it's a discussion we have to have.
Yeah, it's a discussion we're gonna have to have. I mean, it's just a comment that Dan made at this point, but-
I, I don't feel like it needs to be every department.
Yep.
Sorry, I cut you off.
Yep.
It is, it is Ken, but it's also putting money aside for a rainy day. And, and those monies will eventually be used, that's money that would eventually be used-
I think the rainy day has arrived.
For projects that we would, we would have to eventually budget for. So, yes, it is true, it, it's putting money aside for, for expensive projects. But, you know, like Dan said, it also incentivizes the board, the, the departments to be frugal and, and save.
See, that's, that's really my thought too, is like, you know, if you're gonna tell them that the money that they're saving is actually gonna end up staying in their departments, it just kinda makes the ball roll a little bit slower, and it, the spending gets a little bit less, and hopefully, they've got a few bucks at the end of the, the year. And so, I, I realize that, that those funds are gonna sit there, and they are tax dollars. But yet, I still feel the incentive is better than, than not.
I just wanted to tell, like, to tell Kevin, the, the incentive for that is not to put money away. In my, in my eyes, I can't predict winters, I cannot predict breakdowns. And what happens is, is that if we have a catastrophic breakdown of a major piece of equipment, we're gonna have to go to a special town meeting to ask for money. This way, if we have it in our account, or if we have a rough winter, and I don't have to come back and say, well, I went 10% or 20% over my budget because of the winter, I can pull it out of it. But if I have a good winter, I can put it away for if something happens.
No, I understand, but I'm saying if every department does that, that's a lot of money.
I don't see that something happening in every department, that's-
Like I said, this year was a good year, we, I finished with $86,000. But I've seen years as low as 15, 20. And I've seen, I think, one or two years that we were upside down because- and I've seen, I think, one or two years that we were upside down because we had a big winter.
Go ahead Lori.
I, I just wanted to comment that, you know, like it wasn't in my head to do thing across the board, but to really look at it carefully, but I think we know, and as we get further in these discussions, it'll probably come out again, but, and, and this is no, I'm not saying, oh, previous administration did this and people did that, and it just, you know, the, the times were hard for a while and things happened, but we know, we need a fire truck, there's no money for that. We need, the grader was having some issues, there's the sprinkler system at the rec, and you start adding everything up, and, and there's, where's the savings of, you know, we, we're like a million dollars that we need. So somehow we have to get creative to start getting this back, and like you said, if he has equipment that breaks down to be able to replace that, so we're not borrowing money and paying interest to buy equipment. That's, you know, kind of, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just, that's my thinking. I wasn't saying across the board, everybody should keep all their money.
Hopefully, hopefully, the, this board would be able to see through that. I, I, you know, again, how easy could that be? You know, and I, and I understand that also, I mean, it, it could easily be.
You wanna move up your department, move it every year.
Well, I don't think that's Kevin's problem right now.
No, I don't either. Kev, can we, can we keep going?
Yep.
All right.
Next is signs, fifteen hundred, stayed the same. Construction materials, sixty-five hundred, stayed the same. Oils and lubricants, eighty-five hundred, that stayed the same. Tool account, two thousand, the same as last year. Guard rail account, five hundred dollars, it stayed the same. Sidewalk account was twelve hundred, stayed the same. Road striping, I bought it down, two thousand dollars, from seven thousand to five thousand, because the roads in the back are so, they're so rough that I don't think that I should be putting down paint, because we won't be able to put the line straight, so. We'll hold off for that until we do decide to hot top, and then we can deal with that then. Total is two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred, and that's gone up since the year before of two forty-eight, seven hundred, but that was at ten thousand that I told you we shifted around, that's the difference. Next is the building and repairs, five thousand dollars a year, and that's usually for a garage door and some minor maintenance to fix up the garage. For a budget total of, this year is one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and two dollars. It's gone up seventeen hundred and eighty-one dollars since last year. And I have no problem, and if they wanna keep it straight, you know, and flatlined, I have, I have a couple places that I've tagged, five hundred here, five hundred there, that I could put in the back, so it's zero, zero. That's, that's what they're asking us to do.
Now, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When we see figures roll over like you're showing us here, does that mean that, that you never, you never expensed or never had expenses to meet that particular figure, so it's a good figure for you? Is that, you, you've never gone over those figures that you're presenting to us from last year, so you're carrying that same figure over this year? How, how do you, how do you assume those figures? How do you get to those figures?
I go by the figures from the year before and.
If you didn't, if you didn't exceed that expense, then you just carry it forward?
I try to.
Good, that's fine, thank you.
And there's some of them, I'll add, the, the cost has gone up two to three times a year, and we absorb it in our operational budget. We try to do it as much as we can to less interrupt services and, if possible for the taxpayers. And sometimes it's hard, because I'm not the most favorite person when I do this, but we gotta do, we gotta do to get through this.
Okay. If you would, I think, once you guys are gonna ask some questions, or you guys, I'd like to take you to the back, basic, capitals budget, if you will, capital purchases and reserves, the second page from the back. There's an expansion there, reserve account that's tied to, to the, uh, public works, that I want you to draw the attention to. You'll notice in there that we're carrying, I can't get my bearings here. If you look down at the bottom worksheet on that page, you see the road project reserve account. We're basically carrying forward that same amount from last year, two, two hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and that's to pay for road preparations, cover replacements, paving, road project reserves, just, just that. That was money that was shifted out of Kevin's budget before, I talked about that earlier, so we could, the board could have flexibility to spend that in one fiscal year or the next, so, and also to build a reserve.
So, just to, I guess, make the point clear, I, when, when you had mentioned that Dave was asking us to keep one mill and always move it forward, that, that, well, this is a full, right, you have right now three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that's dedicated to the asphalt and the roads and the, so it's more, it's, it's more, much more than a mill that they're, they've been carrying every year. You just have to put those two numbers together.
Which two numbers?
The, the two sixty-four and the one hundred from the first page of his budget. So it comes out to three sixty-four. I just know you were looking for that number, and I was super, and then I, oh, okay, let's add this in. Make sense?
Yep, we're good. Okay, Gary, anything?
What else you got, Kev? You look like you have some stuff to say.
I just wanna add that the budget that I presented here, there is no extras, there's no room for any major breakdowns. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, if we put that on the hot top, will get us three miles of hot top, and about thirty to forty miles that needs attention. Our grader has not been touched, and it's, it's gonna happen, it's a ticking time bomb, because every time we see the CAT technician, he's done, I think, one or two this summer, they had less hours and hours, and, and they blew apart. We're gonna try to ride it out again, but if that lets go when we need it, we're, we're in dire trouble. And then also the only thing else I ask is that, if the taxpayers allow it, that the remaining amount of money that we save at the end of the year, without sacrificing any services, that puts back into our accounts, so if something does happen out of the ordinary, that we're able to draw out of that without, you know, going into general accounts or asking to borrow money or stuff like that.
Coming back to the grader, the grader, I know is one of your bigger pieces of machinery, you greatly need it.
Yes.
Number one, the technician that services your grader, there are warning signs that these technicians pick up on when you're about to have a major blowout. Have they picked up on any of these signs? Have they notified us of any of that?
For the past, I wanna say, and don't hold me to this, but six or seven years, there's parts in the hydraulic, there's pieces of metal that we've been picking up that's been jamming our servos, and it's, I think, I'm not sure which gear it is, but every so often, we find one that wedged in there, the, the, the grader falls in neutral, we go change that servo, there's filings, and there's big pieces of steel. Last year we took apart the transmission filter, and we looked at it with a flashlight, and it was full of brass filings, and they said, we have no idea how this is still running. It's got sixteen thousand hours, I think fifty or sixteen thousand, it's never been touched. It's a ninety-five.
Do you have any idea what kind of money we'd be looking at if this would indeed go on us?
I got a price from them, it's gonna range between, and that's a complete overhaul, because they say that if you gotta do the transmission, they recommend you do the hydraulic pump, the front assist and the other pump, and the motor while everything's apart, because that's all I'm behind. Another CAT certified, warranted is one fifty to two hundred thousand, and a brand new grader is almost four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand.
Now Kevin. This is a, this is how old this machine?
Ninety-five.
A ninety-five, twenty-five years old.
In my, in my eyes, I don't want a new one, because new one has DEF and all kinds of electronics. We have half of the grader parts upstairs, and when something goes wrong, the mechanics know where to exactly go to get that back up and running in minimal time. But so what happens is, if we change that, we can no longer service it, because we'll need a computer and all kinds of software. And I don't think that, for what we do with it, I don't think we need a new one. If we refurbish it, we'd be good for another ten, fifteen years minimal, and by then, we'll deal with that when the time comes.
And Kevin, you're, you're talking about your, your, your department and the garage staff there. This, this public works mechanics team that's there, we don't farm out hardly anything. These guys do all the work in-house, and they can do pretty much anything, so I think that taxpayers are getting their money's worth with, with, with this team, this department that's there.
We service all the departments, and we help as much as we can. The only time that we don't help them is when we gotta get into computers or programs or software, but I would say sixty to seventy percent of the time, everything is done in-house.
So Ken, your point is well taken, but you don't have to worry about Kevin.
So Gary, my question is, I know the town reserve fund is quite low, but can we work something out through his budget where we can pay for the repairs of that vehicle through the reserve account, and then budget from his budget to pay that back into the reserve fund over two years, three years, or?
Well, the reserve accounts that were created as we fund them, they were created for like road project reserve. We do have an equipment reserve account.
Yes, it was one ninety a year. I don't know if we're still funding that.
We haven't funded that in a while, and I think, I think, I don't have the, the GL in front of me, but I think there's about twenty grand in the equipment reserve in the ballpark of that, so, yes, you can fund your reserve account for those kinds of expensive repair projects.
Yeah.
But that's something that, you know, we would have to add in, not necessarily in here, but in our capital budget for, for them.
No, just to, I mean.
There's definitely a labor savings there.
Yeah. I think if you could look into that, and if we can find out a way that we can incorporate that, so we can fix it before it ends up costing us twice that, when it does, you know, get stuck on the side of the road somewhere.
We've gotten figures right from, one of the guys from CAT, he came up, and he gave us an estimate, and he says in order for them to do like a true reading, I think they charge, it's like a fifteen hundred dollar fee, but they tell you, they go through the whole thing and they tell you exactly. I think Twin Rivers had a pay order that.
It's a good question. You can, you can roll the dice and tackle this investment, call it an investment that you need to fund. If you do it in one budget cycle, to get, to give him one fifty to get that thing refurbished and under warranty, your one fifty is, is almost half a mil.
Do we need to put this on an agenda for a selectmen meeting for discussion?
Where we put that expense, it's, it would be an increase to the budget, his budget. Three hundred fifty thousand dollars of spending equals about one mil of taxes, so a hundred fifty, you know, you're in the vicinity of half a mil of an increase associated with that. If you do it over two years, you split that, you split that cost over two years, if you're funding it to the reserve like that.
Yeah, and that's what I was looking for, maybe a three-year split. If you think the repairs will last, let's say, three years, if we can break it down to a three-year funding, but allow him to, to fix it in the spring when he, when he needs it.
Three more years out of that, before we get the money to actually do it?
I'm not a gambling man.
No, I'm saying, like, if we can fix it this spring, but somehow take, you know, I know the town as a whole has reserve budget. If we can pay for it now, and then over the next three years reimburse that, that place we took it.
Our, our, our undesignated fund will not support us going, the only place we could get that money is, is out of the undesignated fund, and our, our, undesignated fund will not support. We can't draw from the undesignated fund, we got wiped out by, by the Twin Rivers abatement, and so, that's not an option for us. So, I think that from a planning, I think it's important for you guys to know as a board, and the finance committee, from a planning perspective, these large capital projects are, you can fund those different ways. You can fund them through dedicated reserve accounts, okay? Put the money there, once we have the money, the town used to do that years ago, way, way back, pre-two thousand and eight, you know, way, in the good days. Or, you can, you can, you can fund it like through reserves, chip away at it, finally when we have the money, we make the purchase. If that's, if the schedule allows, if the equipment will hold up for that long. If your plow trucks, plow trucks are on a fifteen, sixteen year replacement cycle, well, if you budget to reserves to do that, then you have the money, and I think, I think what's important, Ken, I take to heart your, 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 your thought about holding the taxpayers' money. But reserve accounts do a couple of things, that, the one most important thing that they do is it stabilizes the mill rate over a period of time. So if you get, for instance, an anomaly of an expense, and all of a sudden, well, we didn't have the money to pay for that, well, either we're gonna raise all that money in that business year, if you will, and jack up the mill rate to pay for that, or we spread it out over so many years to finance it. And so, reserve accounts, yes, they are putting money aside, and is holding the taxpayers' money, but it also helps to stabilize that mill rate over a period of time, and I think that's, I think taxpayers appreciate a stable mill rate.
So, with, and, and I understand that the, the, the undesignated fund, it doesn't have much money in it, but we know now we're getting eighty thousand dollars going into there at the end of this budget, or this fiscal year. So if we take that eighty thousand dollars plus ten thousand out of the undesignated, and then try to work on getting fifty thousand dollars into this year's budget, so we don't bring up the mill rate, you know, too much, if any. You know, my goal is just to get that truck, cause I know if we don't get it this year, it's gonna cost us a lot more money.
I just want, before we, we move forward on that, I'd like to do some more homework.
Yeah.
To see if there's other ways that we can do this with a cost savings.
Yeah.
I just, I wanna, I wanna get two or three different, like, options.
Right, definitely.
You know, I wanna talk to both scots and see what we can do in-house, what's absolutely necessary that, that needs to be done, what we can do to get by for five years, or, I just wanna weigh out all our options. So if I can get away with not doing the whole shebang for another five or ten years till we're in a better position, well, maybe that's the route we need to take.
Yeah.
So I just, before, and I will look into that this week, so I'll try to get something sooner than later to you guys, different options, you know, as best as I can, to, so that way we can look into that, what's affordable for us. By no means do I wanna bring up any mill rate.
No. No.
Just one final question there, I mean, if, 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 if we were going to attempt to do something in, of, of Jason's thoughts or theories here, do you think that piece of machinery can last two years? So if we were gonna set some money aside for this year and next, to get to that hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand that you're saying, I guess really the, the thought is that, do we have at least a little window here to play with, or, or are we just saying, can't, can't even give you that?
In my opinion, that should have been done two years ago, but so far, knock on wood, it's been going back. You know as well as I do, it ain't gonna let go in the summer, it's gonna let go in the worst snowstorm possible.
The iron filings and the hydraulic pump is a true tell sign. It's a red flag, it's like, I'm coming to get you.
Get it done, get it fixed.
That's why I just wanna weigh out to see.
Sooner than later.
What different routes I can take. If I can get away with just doing one piece, and, you know, and by time, maybe that'll be the option. Most cost efficient way to get things moving, because we have no way, if that lets go, that's our main piece of equipment for snow removal, because our wing is the only one that stayed amped, it's upside down. And nobody else would have a spare grader with that setup. And we've gotten by with the plow truck, but the thing is, we don't have, when we're out plowing, all the trucks are, are being used, so we don't, we can't say that we're gonna be picking up snow and, you know, doing it with the, the trucking, cause everything's all accounted for in plow trucks.
Great.
Thank you.
So with that said, we've gone through Kevin's budget, we've asked questions, we've tried to explain things that, to the best we could. You guys as a finance committee, how many are you, how many members are you again?
We're seven.
We're seven, so you don't have a quorum, okay.
They have a quorum with me, but I'm, I'm not gonna vote for, I mean, if you're asking for a vote for like the insurance budget or anything like that, I'm not gonna vote with vote, so, it's, they need four. But Chris, you wanna hold your own meetings anyway, as a group and do a voter?
All right, well, this is kind of insane thought processes.
All right, but it's kind of insane thought process. It's kind of open after we get through a particular budget. We all were increased to work on this stuff beyond it. We get two months in that line without a quorum, just our hands behind our head.
I know how to address this now. I mean, we'll have to revisit this one way or the other.
So...
Laurie, go ahead.
Are you looking for a vote on the public works?
No, no.
Right now?
No, no, just, just an agreement that it, it appears like we're all in favor of it. Not necessarily that I need a vote at this point.
We can't do that because we agreed to look at the benefits. Not that I want to cut people's benefits, but they have concerns and that's part of this budget. So like, let's at least do the due diligence and talk those numbers out so that they see this is, you know...
So really, I mean, having said that, Laurie, that really will, will, um... There's no way that we're going to be able to expedite this at all because we're going to have to come back and revisit this again with the benefits. As far as I can tell right now, we're going to have to come back and do this again.
Do the ones that Gary suggested we do, like the insurance one can't change, the, what a debt service can't change.
No. We can do those. I think that it's too bad that we don't have that insurance discussion before these meetings, these budget discussions take place because, you know, they have the potential to impact this budget up or down. And I really feel that these employees deserve the benefit of a sit-down with this board to discuss the benefits package before a decision is made on benefits. So I think that, you know, I... I'm just taking a read here that there seems to be an interest in trying to move things along wherever we can and where we can't, we can't. We are under a time crunch to get a budget passed. There's a lot of steps, a lot of procedures, a lot of things that have to happen to get this to town meeting. And so I don't know if there's an opportunity to look at the budget and leave the benefits part of it out and say, we're going to have a discussion about health insurance? If that's what this board wants to have, a health insurance discussion with all the departments at some point in time? And then we can come back and plug those numbers into the budget. Is there a way that would satisfy this board and the finance committee?
Just for clarification, I just asked a question about the benefit package and those particular benefits. Just as an example...
Well, Mano has those questions too. She wants to know how much...
Okay, all right.
Like, she needs that, they need the actual data in front of her to...
Okay.
And then the other thing is, there's a concern about the budget as a whole. And now you want, like, this is the first time they go through this budget. You're not letting them go home and sleep on anything. You're not letting them ask questions. And then you're saying, let's vote by department and then we're going to get to the whole and then they're going to say, well, let's cut by ten percent. Well, we can't, we've already voted. We have to go back and vote again on public. Not that I want to cut by ten percent. I just, I'm just, you know, what if they say two percent? Once they look at the revenues and everything else. I mean, I, I'm sorry that you guys want to brush this through, but I, not... That didn't come out right. I don't feel like you want to brush it through. I just feel like, you know, you have board members with concerns about the budget as a whole. We're going to start doing their first pass-through and now you want them to vote. It's not fair.
I don't, I don't know that we're looking for a vote here, Laurie.
We're not looking for a vote. We're just looking for a general consensus if everything here looks okay with you or if we have to come back and revisit it. I'm not, I'm not saying any more than that. From the finance committee, I mean, any comments there, anything else, I mean, other than what Chris just said? No?
No. Again, without a quorum, we can't even discuss. I mean, we can discuss on our council, but without a quorum, I can't sit here and say that it's approved by our, or supported by the finance committee, because of the quorum. So in order to give this committee a chance, I've got to give them the information and give them an opportunity to hear that out. You know, I hope that we can move some things along to say, I know the times. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, we've got questions, we've got questions, and we've got to get the answer before we move along, simply the fact.
Yeah.
Right, so and those questions aren't coming from this committee, they're coming from the board. And this committee can't make a decision if we don't have that solid number or whatever. It may be, it may change, it may not change. So if I tell you that we can, you know, if we had a quorum here today, we said we support that budget and then you go back and you change numbers based off whether it's health benefits or anything else, that's...
Yeah, no, I don't think we'd come back behind you like that though, but anyway. I mean, so we're just going to keep going the way we are and we're going to address the different budgets that we have in front of us tonight. And I don't see any other way than coming back and revisiting these.
So how does this end up? The plan is to come back to it?
We're going to come back to it. Yeah, because they, they're not even a quorum, so we have to.
I think in your interest, you're better off getting through this with essentially having board members get through that, get to understand what's going on as long as they, they want to contribute this information. We all vent fire, we share.
Right.
You've got to get in that opportunity.
Right.
And then, you know, we can meet amongst ourselves at some point and see where we're at. Maybe there's some same concerns on the finance committee that echo the same that you have there. I don't know that yet.
But Mano, barring the benefits, are you okay with the rest?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm just, as overhaul of all the budgets, the health insurance.
Just so that we know where we stand, because...
That's a major expense, the health insurance.
I think everything looks good too. The only concern is the vehicle, but, yeah.
I do have another question. Is there one we can lease if ours goes up like on Calcie? Is there anybody else around like CAT or...
No, because what happens, our wing is on the opposite side of everywhere else. So we do it with the truck, but we're rolling upside down with the traffic. That's very dangerous. If we've done it before with the truck and that was just to get by, and it doesn't clean as good and it doesn't work as good. But we're the only town, I think, in the state of Maine with a left-hand wing. We've got to be different, I guess.
Nothing wrong with that.
It's worked. It's worked the best for us and it's for us.
Okay, well, are we all set with Kevin?
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kev. Article three to consider to Department three hundred, ambulance and department budget.
I'll lead off for Eric a little bit here and just kind of talk about the ambulance department. The ambulance department is a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week operation. We now service three communities. We are in our second renewal, our second three-year term, if you will, our contract with the communities of Frenchville and Senegat individually. We serve them for the past few years. We also just picked up Grand Isle as well, so we have a very broad area. We have a fantastic team. They're highly regarded in their work and they provide fantastic service, a reliable service to our residents in our budding municipalities. As we work through this budget, they are a revenue generator, if you will, and their enabling article is that we budget a certain amount of revenue for them every year. So when we look on the expense side, the last page of your budget packet is the revenue side, okay? And so what we, what we have done in the past with the department in respect to revenues is any excess revenue above what we projected they were going to receive in billing for services rolls into their equipment reserve. And their equipment reserve is somewhere in the vicinity of about seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's good before replacement of a fire, of a new vehicle.
I would buy a grader.
Or, you know, just expensive equipment like stretchers and those are like thirty thousand dollar items. And so fortunately, the ambulance departments, because they are somewhat self or partially funded, have a healthy reserve. The, taking on the additional communities, the town back, that was before I got here. I was actually in one of the municipalities who picked up, who joined with Madoeska for the service. The, being able to pick up more communities has helped our bottom line. The ambulance department has long been subsidized by the taxpayers. It's no different from any other ambulance department. For instance, they don't, Ambulance Service, Inc., doesn't generate enough revenue to pay for their services. They have to bill each of the services communities that they provide services to for the difference, for their shortfall. And that's because the reimbursement rates just aren't there. But thankfully, through acquiring, broadening our service area, we do charge them a, what is essentially, we bill them for their average calls per year. We know what those average call is, number of calls, what the cost that we're now going to get reimbursed for. Okay, so we project that out and that's what we charge them. Frenchville, Senegat and Grand Isle, for instance, to be ready for them to provide that service. We pick up the revenue from those calls and that helps us. So the town, when they picked up Frenchville and Senegat back then, three, something, three and a half years ago, they did make an investment in having another ambulance and staff. We didn't have to add any more staff or equipment to pick up Grand Isle. We were good. We made sure. We talked with the director and he talked with his staff to make sure that we weren't spreading them too thin. And so, like I said, being able to service those other communities has helped our bottom line. So what we've done, just kind of before we lead off into the budget expense side here for the ambulance department, their reserve account has ebbed and flowed, or I should say grown, and it's been drawn from for purchases. The board has in the past, it was not done last year, but the board has in the past, when the ambulance reserve got healthy enough, utilized some of their revenue to offset their own budget. This budget right here does exactly that. So not last year, but the year before, a hundred, the town, the board put it before the taxpayer. So the townspeople vote to take a hundred and fifty thousand out of their reserve to reduce their operating budget and reduce what we need to ask the taxpayers for taxes. That was done the year before because the balance was healthy enough. The board felt that the number that was in there would support that transaction. It wasn't not done last year, but I think that it is, it can support that this year. So part of the revenue, the additional revenue in your budget that's helping to drive the mill rate down is taken from the reserve account to reduce their operating budget. That being said, ambulance salaries and wages, funded from last year. Can talk about mainstay retirement. Our share of mainstay retirement is at twenty-three thousand. Health insurance went up to one sixteen as compared to one oh five nine ninety-five. Social Security at twenty-four eighty-seven and Medicare at fifty-eight twenty, the same as last year. So a net increase of, on the benefit side of about ten thousand dollars over last year. And my notes here show that we have six full-time and twelve, thirteen part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. From there, do you guys have any questions on, on that? And I'm going to hand off to Eric.
I'm just going to question, do any of these part-time have health insurance coverage?
It's a good question.
What was the question?
If they had any healthcare coverage, the part-time?
No, it's full-time only.
Only full-time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, operating expenses, admin, admin and billing services. That is our billing company that we use to do all our billing out of Presque Isle. That's what that is all for. Clothing, safety equipment, two thousand dollars. That's pretty much self-explanatory for clothing.
Eric, if you would at least refer back to last year that you, that number's unchanged?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, those two numbers are unchanged. Contracted services, specifically with ASI out of Fort Kent, they do send us a bill if we should have to use them for mutual aid. We do have some days, sometimes where our ambulances are out and we have to use them to cover a third call. That does happen and they send us a bill as well, so. We have nine thousand in there. That is unchanged from last year. Contracted services with the Arista County Sheriff's Department, thirteen thousand. That again is unchanged as well.
Thirteen five? Thirteen five? Thirteen thousand five?
Thirteen, I got thirteen thousand. Is it five? How'd you guys update the...
Eric, I'm going to give you...
Thirteen five is the proposed, yeah?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
That's not part of the county tax that we're paying, that they're covering services for sheriff?
We pay that directly to the Arista County Sheriff's Office. That's for the dispatch services. When the mill decided that it was a liability for them, for Bescom, I think it was, they basically told us, they gave us plenty of notice that, you know, we want to move dispatch out of here. We, we had two options. One was the mainstay police and one was the Arista County SO. Mainstay police is, it was not even an option, I think, that we could have pursued. It would have been a lot more money. And I don't even know if it was possible in the timeframe that we needed them to be on board.
Okay.
But I will say that, Eric, if you want to just elaborate, going and I think all the departments that utilize this service from the county, them, fire and PD really like the Arista County SO because everything falls into their database. And it just, Eric, can you speak to it?
Yeah, absolutely. When they call, when they call us, I mean, they start, when they call a card, so everything, times are kept track of, where we're going is kept track of. They know, and then of course, when they get dispatched, when they get a call from nine-one-one, they get all that information so they know where we're going. They know GPS coordinates if we need to know that stuff. They have their protocols. They're always one step ahead of us if they know it's a big event. They're already calling for other ambulances if we need it. And they're really good at what they do, not just for us, but for the fire and for the police department. Everything on the radios is all recorded, so if ever we need to go back and get any information backlogs, it's all there. We can actually log on to the computers ourselves here. We have an account and we can go and look at our, all our radio transmissions, everything like that. It's a really great system. It's been good for us because it's just, it really made our jobs a lot easier knowing we have a reliable dispatch job there, so. It's nice that when you key that mic, somebody's going to answer, so it's nice to have that comfort.
Is that a, is that a monthly fee that comes out to thirteen five or it's an annual fee?
That's annually, yeah. Good. Next, dues, subscriptions, memberships, that's if we have any memberships or dues that we have to pay to, like Arista Region Five EMS, sometimes we have dues to pay with them, or yearly, I should say we do. License permits, certification, that's specifically for main EMS. We have to be licensed as a service and we do have to provide fees for that. Eighteen hundred, that is unchanged. Postage, fifty dollars, unchanged. Printing and advertising, that's at one fifty, or fifty, excuse me, I wrote that down. We don't really have any printed anything like that anymore. Advertising, I can advertise for free through Region Five EMS. I can advertise for free in MCC if we need, you know, job posts. And so that's what we've been utilizing for any advertising and everything like that, so. Travel and training, forty-two hundred dollars, that is unchanged. Your total was fifty-three thousand one hundred. Increased from fifty-two thousand seven hundred. That was for the five hundred dollar increase for the dispatch.
Can we come back to the very first part of that, the administration and billing service?
Excuse me, yeah.
Twenty-three thousand? What does that entail?
This entails a company that basically they take all our run sheets. They assign it codes, there's coding involved as to what level of services these patients have received. And then they do the billing for this and then they send the bill out to either to the insurance companies and whatever the insurance company says, okay, this is what we're going to pay. The patient has to pay this out of pocket, so then they turn around and sell, send the bills to patients as well. There's a lot behind that because they have a lot of classes and trainings and they have to keep up with that as well in order to... have to keep up with that as well, in, in order to stay afloat with all the billing verbiage and all that stuff.
On average, how many calls would you respond to in a year's time?
Eight to nine hundred.
Including all the other towns? The billing department also handles collections.
They handle collections, yes, and a good thing with, with having an independent billing do is, if there's any mistakes that are made, the town can really be held accountable for it, because penalties can be quite, quite severe.
Are there, are there any other groups that do this kind of work, that offer these services?
Locally around here, not that I'm aware of, but I'm sure there are some within the state.
I'm just wondering if there's somebody that would do it cheaper?
Perhaps, I, it's something we can look into, yes. Yep.
The hospital in Fort Kent, they must utilize a service like this, I would think?
They, I'm not, I think they've got their own billing department. If I'm not mistaken, they, they use, they do their own billing, so, yeah.
Anybody else? Keep going.
Okay. Supplies, we have, in general, six hundred dollars for office supplies. We did bring that up from three hundred dollars to cover water in, in the building. We don't have any water, drinking water there, so it's just the, the water cans that you can buy, the water cooler, so that's just covering our water for the year. General supplies, that's four hundred dollars, that's unchanged. This, this buys our laundry detergent for our, for our sheets and car, I don't know, car wash, laundry detergent, just anything that we might need around the station that we need to use for, for the station. Medical supplies, twenty-five thousand, that is down three thousand from last year. In previous years, that, that line item was very under budgeted, it was almost getting overdrafted, so, and last year was like my first year getting comfortable with, with the budget and trying to make sure this account was well funded for, for medical supplies, because the, the supplies unfortunately are expensive, and there's nothing cheap about that. I do the best I can to find the best deals or cheaper supplies as, as I can, but given that, that one year that I finally got to see a broad number as to what we were gonna use, we were, we'd expended, I believe it was, where am I, it was just twenty-one thousand dollars, so I think with twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll be safe in the ballpark, considering that we're gonna have Grand Isle as well now, we're gonna have an extra twenty to thirty calls, so this should be fairly safe for us to.
And those are the supplies they get reimbursed when we get, when we bill people anyways?
Yeah, for the most part, yes, yeah.
If we're being reimbursed through the billing, why is there a charge on the budget?
We still have to account for it.
Yep.
A bigger slash.
You have, all the expenses go in the budget, then you have your revenue side, so.
Yeah, we have to have a line item, and, and I have to pull the money out of to pay the bills.
So, so those medical expenses basically are covered, covered at a hundred percent?
Yeah.
Give or take?
Give or take. Oxygen, two thousand dollars, that's down from up to three thousand, a few years ago was twenty-two thousand, or twenty-two hundred last year, brought that down to two thousand. Protocols have changed over the years, I mean, when I started twenty years ago, we were giving everybody oxygen. Well, that's all, that's out the door. Patients are comfortable, and their oxygen saturation, I don't wanna get into too much Chinese here for you guys here, but their oxygen saturation is in a certain parameter, even though they're having a heart attack, they don't need oxygen, that's not gonna help. So, we're using less oxygen now than we have been before, so. So that's down to two thousand. Bottom line, on that one was twenty-eight thousand, it's down a thousand nine hundred, excuse me, two thousand nine.
Two, two thousand nine, yep.
Utilities, phone, that is up five hundred from two thousand, at twenty-five hundred dollars. I think Gary could probably explain more of that.
So the, the town utilizes a voice-over internet system, our call, we are, we don't have a phone line per se with traditional landline, we have internet phone through three CX, and so we have internet in all our facilities, in our, our phone system, we call it VoIP. When we changed to the VoIP system, the entire cost of the VoIP system was being handled through the town office, the town office building budget, if you will. And so this budget, what it does is it's putting that cost into each department, because they each have a phone line or two, and so we're reassigning those costs out of, out of the town office building budget to each department's budget, and that's what the increase is for.
Here, that's six hundred, that is unchanged. Bottom line there is up five hundred, thirty-one hundred versus twenty-six hundred last year. Moving on, and minor equipment, we have the, I wrote it down, six thousand from eight thousand to two thousand dollars. This, this is a minor equipment account, this is what will buy things like if an onboard breaks, or a, you know, cardiac monitor, or a stretcher, or something like that breaks, or, and we need to replace it. This, eight thousand dollars with a lot of the, I mean, with two thousand dollars, I can replace most of the little things, that's not a big deal, but if I were to need a stretcher, eight thousand dollars doesn't even come close to it anyway. So the way I, I saw this is I can bring it down, and if we need a, a big ticket item, we can approach the board and ask you guys to go into our reserve account to purchase, and let's say if we need a stretcher, or cardiac monitor, or something like that.
Eric? I do have a note here, I want to interrupt you, but I just want to make, I have a note from the previous year that, that in that line item, minor equipment, seventeen hundred ninety-five dollars goes to your copier lease?
Right.
So, you know, you might.
Oh, that eats it up?
No, I don't have a lease, we bought that.
Okay, so that's.
Sorry, my bad, yeah, that's purchased.
So that no longer?
No, that was bought, that's bought and paid.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Minor equipment repair, if we do have small equipment that can be repaired, if, if the stretcher, the hydraulics isn't working good or something, and it's just a, a repair, that's where we get that out of that account. Bottom line there, it's down to forty-two hundred from ten thousand to fifty. Vehicle equipment, you got the gas, is at ten thousand dollars, that's flat from last year, unchanged. We've been doing okay, as long as fuel prices stay okay, stable, I should, I should say. We're, we're, we're doing all right with that. Maintenance and repair, we were at ten thousand dollars as well, that's also remained flat in previous years. That's pretty well okay right there, too. We haven't had, no, we haven't had many issues, but.
Where does propane come in?
I'm not sure, that was just part of the line item that, that they put in there, we don't use propane. And that's a twenty thousand flat from the previous year for bottom line. Our total bottom line is six seventy-nine, five oh seven, up from the six seventy-seven, five fifty. That is due prior to insurance, that pretty much everything else, that either stayed flat or it came down in the budget.
Okay. Any questions?
If you have no questions, I'd like to draw your attention to the revenue budget, which is the last page on, on your pack here.
Yep.
We could take a look at revenues for the ambulance department. So you can see the history there of, of what was approved as budgets and was actually drawn in. The fourth ca, column before last is what we're proposing this year for, for revenue, billing revenue, we're proposing to be flat from last year. Keep in mind that what we've done in the past is, we've not put in everything that we thought we were gonna get for billing revenue, so that we would allow some money to roll into their equipment reserve. We have the contracted service with St. Agatha, for ninety-four hundred dollars, contracted services for, uh, sorry, let me go back to billing revenue, did I say the number, which is three seventy-five, which is the same as last year. We actually drew in last year four hundred and thirty-six, twenty-seven. And then, on billing revenue, contracted services from St. Agatha, ninety-four hundred dollars, contracted services from Frenchville, thirteen thousand dollars, contracted services from Grand Isle, which is a new revenue for us of eight thousand sixty-seven dollars, and you'll notice that I have in there transfer in from ambulance surplus, and that's what I was talking about earlier, and you can see the three-year, three-year account activity or his, budget activity in that respect, in the eighteen budget and in the nineteen budgets. A hundred fifty thousand was taken in from their reserve to, to supplant or offset their own budget. It wasn't done last year, and we're proposing to do that this, I mean, it'll be up to the board if we want to do that or not. I needed to put a place mark in there as past practice, so, any questions in respect to revenue?
So we're looking at about a hundred twenty-five thousand hitting the taxpayers, if you take the revenue minus the expenses.
What is the question?
Sorry, I was just looking at revenue and expenses, brings in about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars going to, for the townspeople to pay, so.
The town's, has always subsidized, that's a discussion that I had earlier.
Yep.
All towns subsidize their ambulance departments, and so that gap is, is closed over the years because of the addition of, the acquisition or getting more towns.
You had also mentioned earlier that they, their reserve fund is adequate to fund the one fifty. Would it be adequate enough to fund two hundred thousand, let's say, this year, just to help offset the town budget a little bit more, and?
So I think, let's talk about the fleet, if you will. If you can talk to us about the age of your fleet, how many ambulances we have?
Yep, we got the three ambulances, our newest one being the two thousand and eighteen, which we have, we're still making payments on that, that was at least owned over five years. I'm not, don't call what the payments were on there.
Hold on just a second.
Went in two thousand and fifteen, that one too, that one is, as I said, mentioned, five years old, still runs great, you know, it's been, been good to us, and then we have our two thousand and ten, bringing it out, that, that was ten years old. Past practice has always been after ten years or so, ambulances structurally start getting a little rotted out and start having some, some, some problems with them, and that's when we look to start to replace that, that unit, so it's been good to us, it's still going right now. I would like to sometime in the, in the next year, perhaps, start looking at getting another one to replace that one. Unfortunately for us, you know, I remember a previous board member, Mr. Morton, had asked if, you know, diesel, you can get two three hundred thousand miles, that's true, yes, but us, it's, it's the, the salt and, and the corrosion that, that hurts us as far as longevity for our ambulances. So, so this one is starting to show that, that, that wear and that rust. It's due for an inspection next month, hoping, see how that's gonna go, hopefully it'll pass, get another winter out of it perhaps, and then next summer we can certainly discuss replacing that ambulance.
So, to get to your question, Jason, the, the ambulance, the two thousand and eighteen Ford F, E four fifty, we pay, we have a debt service annual payment of forty-two thousand, I'm gonna round it up there, three hundred dollars, and I think we have this year, next year, I think we're out until twenty-twenty-one. I have to check, I don't have my debt service.
Right.
Schedule in front of me, but we're still out a couple more year payments on that. The ambulance department, the, the payment for this has been coming from the reserves, so it's not in your debt service budget.
Yep.
Every year, the, the ambulance's reserve budget has been paying for the debt service on the ambulance.
So we could assume a new one next year, let's say, would be maybe fifty, obviously prices go up.
If we do at least own?
If, if we do at least own, but would that still leave enough if we take the two hundred thousand dollars, would that still leave enough to pay for that and some in the, in that reserve? I mean, is that gonna hurt that reserve too much?
Ultimately, I think it would be okay, yeah, but would leave your reserve at around five hundred thousand?
You know.
That's a fair, good number, yeah.
Because fifty thousand dollars can go a long way to help relieve some of the, the tax burden, and, I mean, it's not saying we'd ask that every year, but, you know, just for this, to help us move forward.
So the discussion right now would be that we try to increase the income side from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand?
Yeah, for this year.
What would the, you left in the reserve for the ambulance, after that would be done?
So we're at about seven hundred right now and change, seven-ten, so we take, keep in mind that we gotta take out the forty-two, it was the number I told you, out of that, and then another, you know, another.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, so that would take that down to less than five?
Five hundred thousand, half a million?
Yeah.
And projected, projected for the next year, what would the increase again be for that, roughly, a hundred thousand?
I, I don't know, I, I think that, I just want you to be mindful of, you know, I don't know if you're gonna build up to the, to, to that amount again next year, and so whenever we take money out of, out of the reserve, if you will, if we can't repeat that transaction next year, that, that shows up like a mill rate increase.
Like you said, we could do it every few years, while earlier, you said, you know, every few years we take something, help.
Yes.
Once with time help.
Yeah, right. But if, but if, if the fund, if that reserve account is not adequately funded like next year, and we say, we just can't really go into it by the same amount of money, by the two hundred, or we can't go into it all, that's a revenue loss.
Yeah.
I know, I know it sounds weird to call it revenue.
I'm just thinking the town garage was wanting, or we're even considering raising the taxes for that greater, where we have a half a million dollars sitting in the account. I have trouble with that.
So what would the reason be, the, the reserve account, why is that reserve account not being rolled over into the designated fund like the others?
Because the reserve account is, is exactly that, is that it's a capital reserve account, it is set aside to fund capital outlays, and, and it doesn't roll into the surplus like unspent monies in, in a department budget. That's how, that's how municipal government works in Maine, it's not a Madoeska thing, it's, it's a town thing, and so for us, that, that's the hand that we have to play, and that, there's nothing that we can do to change that.
It's just from a, my view, it's, it's, it's hard to see a, a department doing so well, and the other one struggling to stay afloat. This is our count, you know what I mean? If one's struggling, we should help him.
You must be older than fifty years old.
I am. I struggle a lot. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Anything else? Lori?
Oh, I'm having a hard time. No, I, I, listen, I'm, I'm being very careful with the ambulance department. I found out a couple last week, I saw my daughter-in-law struck at the police department two days in a row, and I couldn't figure out what was going on, so I called her and I asked her, and she's been spending time with Eric, tentatively thinking about taking a class and going to work for them, so I don't really want to involve myself in the ambulance department budgeting, just because, I mean, I don't know, I feel like a family member might go work there, and I should just mind my business with, with this.
I can appreciate that.
So I'm having a, having a hard time, though, my, the inside of my mouth is bleeding.
So that, is there anything, go ahead.
I would just encourage the board to look at some of the other options, other municipalities to do, I'll give you the example. See, here we run the fire EMS, they're a little bit joint in their budget system, and because you have a fire department, it doesn't really generate revenue, it's hard for a fire department to maintain itself without requesting direct taxpayer dollars, right? So when you have shared revenues from similar departments such as the fire EMS, it also alleviates some of those situations, and more falls along with what Ken's talking about, where departments are sharing that, and it makes that process a little bit easier. I would just encourage the board to look out, even beyond our local area, and look at what other municipalities are doing with their budgets when it comes to fire and EMS, or how we have a fire department struggling, and I think there's a possibility that ambulance service, working collaboratively on the budget system with the fire department, could benefit both of those without paying for some taxpayers. could benefit both of those without paying for some taxpayers. That's my suggestion.
Do you have any suggestions as to where and how we would start that process to inquire about this?
I would reach out to the chiefs of those departments and find out what they do in, in their budget cycles and how that works for them. And I'm not saying that's the answer here, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying with all, up here, with all their money, give it to the fire department. But I think, you know, given the circumstances where we're at, I think we can maybe be in a better place by combining some of our departments and helping reduce those expenses directly sent to the taxpayer.
Point well taken. Anybody else?
Hey, listen, I just, um, I'm not gonna ask a question except didn't you guys, wasn't there this, this, hasn't there been this discussion like Dan said, uh, where would you start? Haven't you guys had some kind of discussion about that? Just really preliminary, just throwing it up in the air, like this is not a new concept for, to you guys there.
Yeah, so.
Fire and ambulance?
We, we, prior to me getting here, uh, three years ago, uh, it was a s- sort of a spearhead by, uh, some of our neighboring communities to see whether or not there was a regional, regional solution here for fire EMS, particularly fire. And so, we did have, uh, some meetings with other fire departments. We met actually in Fort Kent and, uh, to discuss whether or not, and, and it was more, that's, I don't know if it was necessarily driven from a cost standpoint. It was more being driven by the fact that the resources standpoint and manpower and cost. That it's, it's becoming much more complicated to run volunteer fire departments. Uh, the, the expectations, Jason can elaborate on that, but, and I was a fireman for, for nine years. So, the expectations of firemen and the trainings that they have to, to do to be a volunteer, a very little stipend, are high. Uh, just like they would be a full-time fireman, they need to get all the certifications and, you know, so the recruitment was becoming difficult. It, it looked like, you know, we were heavily were dependent, or fire departments were heavily dependent on, uh, people that had been there for a long time and, and recruitment efforts were struggling in some communities and not so much others. And so, we wanted to have like a regional discussion to see whether or not there was some opportunities for a regional fire EMS kind of thing. Uh, and, and if my memory serves me right, this was also driven by the fact that, well, what drove, what drove, uh, Madawaska to expand their ambulance department was the fact that ASI, uh, all of a sudden came in and they said they, they had never been billing towns before, for their op, for, for the difference. They could no longer continue to provide ambulance services without picking up the shortfall from each community. And so, ASI picks up their, they, the way that they, uh, calculate each community's, um, let's see, requests, if you will, is based on their valuation. Uh, and there's a formula based on their valuation, the state valuation of, of each community. So, that whole regional discussion, I know this is long-winded, but it was born out of, all of a sudden, ASI now wants to build all these towns and the towns are like, whoa, like, you didn't see this coming. And so, can we have a regional discussion about a regional fire EMS? And that was three years ago.
Yeah, I just thought I remembered hearing a conversation here in town that
It, it didn't go far.
That you were.
ASI means what again?
Ambulance Service Inc., based out of Fort Kent.
Okay, anything else? We're good?
Yep.
Doug, would you entertain a motion to go beyond the two hours?
We're there already.
With the bathroom break?
Eric, we're not kicking you out if you want to stick around.
Yes, I would entertain a motion.
We're not kicking you out, so if you want to stick around.
So, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we, um, extend beyond the two hours, but, um, take a five-minute break.
Second that motion?
Three-minute break.
All in favor? Very good, recess for five. God, we're only hitting, what, Article four of eight? We've already bumped to hours. We've got another two hours.
I knew that, those are I said, there's no way you can tackle all that in one night. It's a lot of
General assistance, insurance should be alright, sure, insurance should go fairly quick. Inter-gu- uh, governmental budget. Debt service, yeah, there's a few of them on the backside there that shouldn't be too all.
You know when you
Hey, there's more too, there's a box somewhere. Somewhere, there's, there's a box of water. The heck, did we put that box somewhere?
Two down, two more to go. Two hours down, two.
All of you guys at four?
I'll be up at four, or four-thirty. Four-thirty, I'll watch the sun come up.
Come up to five fifteen?
Yeah, well, at the lake, we're, uh, for all of your new guys, you're in the hills. You're not on the hill. You dating?
It, it usually is cooler in here, y'all take another one.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'm good. To this particular camp, this particular company? What do you mean, fifty hundred? Are coming in that first week? Any kind of commenting, maybe? No, no, but I mean, even that? It's a big territory. You must be covering the big territory to be, to be dating that day.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna vote there, I know you guys wanna get through this, but I feel like, I feel like No, and I could vote with you, but I just don't, I mean, I, they need a chance to have their numbers in front of them and be comfortable. No, no, I can't.
I was gonna say, they must be charging a pretty big bill. It's all, uh, twenty-two hundred, twenty-two, twenty-two hundred. I'd have to go back through those expenses, but that doesn't seem like a lot of money to, at the, at the end of it. Oh, God, that's always
I almost thought you were walking cooler in the kitchen.
Absolutely. You have to separate them somehow. Now, we, um, here we go. Back in session.
Mister, Mister Chair, if I might, uh, Carol wanted me to mention something and I, I, it was a good point, uh, so we all understand. Reserve accounts, um, capital reserve accounts or any reserve accounts are, uh, proposed by the board. They are approved at town meeting for a specific purpose. So, if ever, you know, we wanted to shift money from one reserve account for something other than what it was intended for, we gotta go back to the, we gotta go back to the voters for that. And Dan, I, I was, I want to get back to you, um, on revenue sharing and I, I wanted to, 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 yeah, basically clarify something and I, we just kept talking and I forgot. Uh, we are statutorily required to plug in that revenue sharing number that's, that's given to us. We need to take, revenue sharing needs to be used to reduce taxes. So, uh, I just wanted you to know that, um, if you give us a number of what they're telling us they're gonna pay us, then we have to use that, we have to use that number to reduce taxes. It's not something that we have a choice.
Okay. Alright, let's move on to Article, Article what? Article four, consider the department six hundred recreational department budget.
So.
Did you wanna say something, Gary, first, or do you want me to let him go?
I mean, we, we, I can go through the salaries and the benefits again, uh, if that's okay. Um, right now, we're showing that, uh, a slight increase in, in overall wages there at two thirty-six oh two six, uh, compared to last year. Um, and, you know, the reason why there's an increase, it's not that we're increasing the budget, um, in the rec department this year. It's because last year we hired people there. Um, we have an employment agreement with them when they started to work for us at a certain rate of pay that, at six months, based on a, a good eval, that we would, uh, bump them up, uh, their rate of pay. So, that's the reason why that the increase is there. It's not that nobody's getting Colas or, or any raises. It's just that there were steps in, in employment agreements that need to be honored, uh, for that. Moving on down, um, mid-state retirement benefits trend with that. Um, so, uh, let me back up. So, the overall budget for salaries and wages at the rec department is two thirty-six oh two six. An increase from last year's two-two-eight-nine-two-two. Trending from there is mid-state retirement, the town's contribution is fifteen thousand six sixty-three. Uh, health insurance at eighty-five-five-sixty-three, that reflects the ten percent increase in the rate for six months. Employer Social Security's fourteen thousand six thirty-four, Medicare, three thousand four twenty-two, for a grand total of, in the employee benefits of one nineteen-two-eighty-two, as compared to last year's one eleven-two-ninety-five. And with that, I'm gonna hand off to Sam and Diane to talk about their operations. While they're doing that, I'm going to pass out, uh, the revenue and expense of the programs. There are, uh, some programs that are self-funded, if you will. People pay for their kids to come in for a baseball activity or whatnot. That's funded and it's expensed out and it's, it doesn't, yes, do you have that already?
I had one.
Okay, I did pass it out.
Yeah.
It's, I think it's that one up there, Dan. No, the, yeah, that one. Go ahead, Sam.
Yep. So, starting with operating expenses, uh, we've got clothing and safety equipment at three seventy-five, which is the same as the previous year. Due subscriptions and memberships at three hundred, which is also the same. Uh, printing and advertising at five hundred, which is an increase of two hundred from the previous year. Uh, the thought process behind that would, uh, was to try to do some, uh, paid advertising for some of the larger programs that we do offer to try to, um, get more, um, interest from the community as well as surrounding communities to see if we can, um, bump up some of the programs. Cause we, uh, at least at the short time that I've been here, we've, I know some of the sports programs have been, um, just haven't been a lot of kids that have joined and, uh, just to see if we can, uh,
Are you referring to the situation today with COVID nineteen? Or are you talking about these programs as a whole from years past?
Just as a whole, as a whole, yeah, not, not COVID nineteen related.
Okay.
Uh, moving on, uh, travel and training, uh, is at fourteen hundred, that's the same, uh, from the previous year. Totalling operation, uh, operating expenses at, uh, two thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Moving on to supplies, we've got office supplies at thirteen hundred dollars, which is the same as the previous year. Uh, general supplies is at a thousand dollars, which is an increase of five hundred dollars from the previous year. Uh, we, uh, would like to use that money for, um, updating our first aid kits for the summer and the winter activities, the summer program and the winter program, as well as the maintenance guys should have a first aid kit in their vehicles when they're away from the rec. And, uh, the first aid kits at the rec right now are not, um, they're lacking some, um, supplies as well as outdated supplies that are in there right now. So, I do, that would just be to cover that, uh, that purchase. Uh, next janitorial supplies is at, uh, two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, that's the same as the previous year. Uh, totaling supplies is four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, moving on to utilities, we've got electricity at twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, which is the same as the previous year. Uh, telephone is at two thousand six hundred dollars, which is also the same as the previous year. Uh, trash at four hundred dollars, which is the same. Uh, septic at twelve hundred dollars, which is the same. Uh, sewer at five hundred dollars, the same as well. Uh, heating fuel is at five thousand dollars, which is a decrease of sixteen hundred from the previous year due to the, um, good rate that we got through the, the townwide, um, rate. Uh, water fees, uh, thirteen hundred dollars, which is the same. Internet is at thirty-six hundred dollars and that is also the same. Uh, totaling utilities is, uh, thirty-six thousand fifty dollars. Uh, moving on to minor equipment, uh, rental, which is the, uh, copier that we lease at the rec, uh, rec department, uh, is at twelve hundred dollars for the year, it's the same as the previous year. Moving on, uh, vehicle and equipment, gas, diesel and propane is at seven thousand dollars, which is the same as the previous year. Uh, repair and maintenance of vehicles is at four thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, is also the same as the previous year. Uh, in total for vehicle and equipment is eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Can I stop you there for a sec?
Sure.
So, I'm seeing here that you've already, uh, overspent that figure, that, that figure of, uh, repair and maintenance. Looks like, uh, up to six thirty-twenty, you spent five thousand three twenty-three?
Yes, that is, um, there had been a lot of repairs to the tractor as well as the truck and a few other of our equipment. Um, so that, those are just repairs that were needed to be made and, uh, we had overspent in that line item.
Okay.
All set? Uh, moving on to general maintenance, fire alarm and sprinkler, there's, uh, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, Sam, can I, can I break in here with that? Lori kind of alluded to that earlier, I think it'd be a good point to mention here. Our sprinkler system at the multipurpose is a dry system, meaning it's, it's, it's pressurized with air. And in the event that, you know, the sensors pick up the fire's heat and they release, uh, that's what opens, you know, the, the loss of pressure is what activates the, uh, the water to come in to the sprinkler system. Um, it's a dry system because it's a cold building, and so it needs to be dry. That system there is, we've been patching, uh, pinholes constantly, putting clamps and rubber bands and stuff like that to try to prevent the pinholes at the bottom of the pipes are, are corroding out, if you will. And so, we can't, we're constantly, um, having to fix that. Uh, we, I can't remember the, the amount of money, we know that it's gonna cost a lot of money to update, upgrade that fire suppression system in that building. We, I can't remember the amount of money. We know that it's gonna cost a lot of money to update, upgrade that fire suppression system in that building. So Gerald, Gerald, we're here tonight, he would remind us of that. He'll probably do that when he gets, comes here to talk about his budgets. But we do have that sprinkler system that's, we've been patching along. And at some point in time, we're gonna have to discuss, what do we do with that?
Does it, does it go, you guys must be, you guys must be subject to, to inspections? And? What's that?
We get efficiency fails every, every six months.
So the system is not passing?
It, it doesn't meet inspection. It is functional though, but, you know, it will do its job, but it's just that it's, it's time.
So if we have some major event over there and they wanna see our insurance, would that, would that be exposed? Would we see that somewhere that, that the fire suppression is?
I don't know.
I know the, the fire marshal checks it out before any major events, and I believe it was the Acadian Festival last year where one of the events almost got canceled because the sprinkler system wasn't working to efficiency and they weren't allowing a certain amount of people in the building, so it's definitely something that can shut down the building pretty quick.
We were having issues. It was a faulty, it was a faulty valve there.
The gate valve.
The gate valve. That, that's been fixed. But whenever we fix that, we can't, we have to have main fire suppression syst, I think they're called. Is it main fire? Protection? They're the ones that have to come through the work and they have to put their stamp on that. And so.
So they're putting their stamp and just saying deficiencies? There are some deficiencies?
Well, when they come through the repairs, you know, that they're qualified repair technician for those kinds of systems, so, yeah, they're, they're backing their repairs. But, you know, the, the bands and.
I guess really what I'm getting at is could, could we have some major event someday that, that would be denied because of where our water system, sprinkler system is not working correctly?
No, because it is working to enough capacity, but it's just that it's not meeting a hundred percent of the the need that it should be needing.
And we can ask Jim Susie to speak to that when it comes to talk about his budgets in our next meeting. I will say that, you know, we've, you know, we've talked with, we have our activities in there, but we also have like the Top of Main Trade Show.
Right.
You know, and so I think our discussions have been that we may have to put a fire watch in there if, if that system is not doing what it's supposed to do. Meaning, fire watch would be somebody would be in the building at night to make sure that, you know, they can call you. It is an alarmed building, don't get me wrong. It'll call out automatically, but.
No.
It doesn't?
It hasn't called out for about three years now.
No, since we don't have a, a sign on board.
Well, once, once we left vestcom and went to the sheriff's office, the, the system doesn't dial out because the sheriff's office won't do auto dialers.
Oh, yes, I'm gonna tell you that.
But to further.
But we, we do have a redundancy though, that instead of that, it will call out.
No.
No, no, no. Like staff redundancy, meaning it'll call, the dialers will call the staff, somebody with the fire department and directly. Not, just not through the nine-one-one system.
But further Doug, what could happen is because the pipes leak so often, tomorrow there could be a pinhole that appears. And if the pressure reduces fast enough in the system, it'll deactivate the system. Which would cause us to say there's an event the day after, you can't have the event because that pinhole needs to be fixed. So, yeah, it's.
It has happened fairly recently too, like just during our programs, the six week program, so it just ended. I was leaving, locking up the building and I heard the, the pinhole air coming out of the system. So the next day the maintenance guys fixed it, but it, you know, so it does happen fairly recent, fairly frequently.
Good question. Can we, are we in some ways work on that system?
I think we can, we can plug those little pinholes, but I don't, we can't work in the, the mechanical side of that sprinkler system.
Same again, but what if it's piping that's leaking? Pipe's cheap. And if we can do the repairs.
Oh, I, I don't know that we can, because it's a public building. I'm not sure that we can.
So every time we have a pinhole, we call band-aid?
No, no.
No, we fix the pinholes and call band-aid when it's replaced where this.
So there's a lot of Band-Aids, if you will, along.
So we are allowed to Band-Aid?
Yes, which has been happening.
I, I think, can I just add, I think just for those that, we've had prior discussion about this. I think the figure was close to a hundred thousand dollars to replace the whole system. I could be wrong, but that's, that's what I remember. And the reason the prior boards had chosen to wait on it and not really do anything is because of the whole talk about consolidation of schools. And then what's gonna happen with this building? If we do that, then potentially the rec could just move here and then we could change that to a storage facility or like, so that was why I, from my understanding that that's been let go and, and they were waiting. So it's up to us if we want to continue waiting or, or, you know, address it.
So this has been like tabled for a few years then?
I, I believe. Am I, am I following this conversation correctly?
I'm glad as you pointed out, previous boards had basically said, well, you know, the discussions with the Valley Unified were, were ongoing and the disposition of the school was, was in question as to whether or not that's something would fall into town hints or fall, would be sold or whatnot. That's something, that's a bigger discussion. But the possibility of, of these facilities becoming town buildings, if you will, not the school, led them to say, well, before we make any big investments at the multi, let's just wait and see what happens and see what the townspeople want to do with these facilities before we spend that kind of money up there revamping that, that fire suppression system.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to move on to the very first question, this telephone, twenty-six hundred dollars and internet, thirty-six hundred dollars. It's up to sixty-two hundred dollars. You'll be hard pressed to convince me, although you don't have to convince me, but I, I don't, I don't think sixty-two hundred dollars is well spent for phone and internet in a recreation department. I think we can do with, out totally or with far less.
The telephone, is that the same?
So the telephone is, is the VoIP system. And the internet is a couple of things. It's internet for the building and it's also provides for the, for the the internet for the Top of Main Trade Show, the wifi, the hotspot. So there's a dedicated line of internet for that and, and public internet there. And then there's the internet that supports our, our systems. Those are separate.
If it's just for certain events, HughesNet will give you access to coverage or whatever they call it. Sell data for a segment of, period of time at a fraction of this cost. Sell it.
Chase, you know, we look at this internet service right now. I mean, your thoughts there? I mean, to me, it, it looks high. Telephone, I, I don't know if I can question or argue that too much, but, but the internet here seems to be really out of.
I, I think a little bit. I think one of the things that can be done is reducing to one internet connection line and then purchasing a firewall that could separate and segment the two networks. And the cost of that firewall would be less than the cost of the internet for the year, but would also reduce the price the year after.
Can somebody explain to me why we need the internet?
There's a lot that goes on with the internet. For the rec, some of the programs, I believe, use them.
And we used only one internet, now we have two.
And that's where.
And, so what, what, two's question here? I mean, do we have, do we have? For what?
For the second one, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can take a look at.
Yep, we can. All right.
Go ahead, Laurie's got a question.
Yep.
And the trade show activities and things that happen there, all those extras, like you guys provide, you know, your maintenance people and all of this stuff and, and cleaning and, and there's no charge for you to do any of that, right? Rental, rent fee or, or anything like that. What other events are held there that you, like what, what other kind of events do you not get a fee to? You know, I understand it's all town events, but what other events are we talking about?
Acadian festival would be another big one.
Music in the parks, that's their rainy, that's their rain.
The what?
Rain, uh, music in the park. When they have, when they get rained out, they go there.
Inside?
Yeah.
They had like, last year they had, what's the, not a valid day, but what was it? Soul?
Uh, the Rhythm and Roots.
Rhythm and Roots, yeah.
I definitely think it's something we could look into, like for example, the other, that gentleman that came into one of our meetings who wanted to use a space. I think we should come up with a better rental fee for some of our properties, our fields and the building itself.
Yeah.
We can certainly look into the internet issue.
What else?
I'm not gonna repeat whatever everybody was.
Okay, point taken. Go ahead, Sam.
Yep. So we're moving on to building repair and maintenance. Parks and Restrooms is at nine thousand dollars. It's the same from the previous year. Multipurpose building repair is at four thousand dollars. It's the same as the previous year. And we'll note that we did overspend in that line item. It was due to a oil tank that had gone bad, so we needed to replace it. It was during the, the cold winter months. So we really didn't have a choice. And at that point, we were close to being over, but instead of separating the accounts that we had met with Dana at the time to, instead of going over in that line item, we could have separated it into other accounts, but we just decided to put it into this one, just so that that purchase would have stayed together. So that's the, the reason for the going over in that line item. Any comments on that? Okay. So totaling building repair and maintenance comes out to thirteen thousand dollars, which is the same as the previous year.
Sam, can you, can you elaborate on, on the facilities that you maintain? Part of those parks and restrooms, where, where those are?
Parks and restrooms, yeah. So the multipurpose building, the Boy Scout Hut, the Bridge Point Beach, as well the boat landing in back of the town garage or central building. And the boat landing in, next to the, the Historical Society as well, we mow that. The Bicentennial Park, the Zian Park, and now the New Pocket Parks as well, that'll be under our purview. All the athletic fields as well, we take care of those. The multipurpose field as well. So that's.
So you have like twenty of them?
What's that? I'm sorry.
You have twenty of them?
That's all the parks and, that's all that falls under the parks and restrooms.
But I'm saying that those units, those, those portable units, you have roughly twenty that you're maintaining or paying for, roughly?
Correct, yeah. I don't know if it's twenty, but.
Were you talking about porta potties?
Yeah.
And an off-road party?
Is that what you're, I thought that's, that's what you were.
No, that's just parks, parks and restrooms, parks, I mean parks and then restrooms.
Facilities maintenance.
There's restrooms at the Bicentennial Park, at the Bridge Point Beach. There's a porta potty at the.
So that, but that's part of this bill, right?
Right, exactly.
Would that include the RV park down by the town garage on the river?
Yes, it would, yep.
Assuming that we own a piece of property that falls under the category of parks. If the piece of property would never be used in a three hundred and sixty-five day period, would we continue to service it?
That's definitely something we could look at and then.
What do you mean?
Quantify the.
Well, again, it's a little bit personal, but the RV park down by the town garage is a direct conflict with a private business having a RV park rental. Now, it is policy in town here that the town is not to be engaged in any form of business that is in competition with the local business, which is exactly what we're doing with the park down by the town garage. Now, I'd like to know how often is that park used? I don't need them tonight, but within a reasonable amount of time, I would like figures on how many times that has been used.
Is, is that, is, is that even possible? I mean, is, is somebody?
The, the PD, because people, campers can come in at off-hours. The only department that we have that is open to, to handle, uh, somebody coming in after four PM would be the police department. So the police department is the one that handles reservations over there. They have those numbers.
Okay.
I thought, Dan, I wasn't sure if your question is whether or not we maintain the buildings in the winter. Like those facilities are, they're winterized and closed.
Significant, significant amount of grass to be mowed there. And to my knowledge, there has only been one camper there this summer. And secondly, I would appreciate an answer to why is the town allowed to compete with a private business owner that's in the exact same business?
Well, just for everybody's information, that project there is a Department of Conservation project. They paid for the, that boat landing. It was done under grants at the same time. It was a regional grant, my God, this was, it was a selectmen in Frenchville back then, but the boat landing in Frenchville?
Boat landing was, but not the, not the RV park sites. That was Christina's baby.
Was it not part of the same project though?
No.
Right before two thousand fourteen, about two thousand thirteen, I think.
Well, the ba, the bathroom facilities.
Fourteen, we were on the Acadian Congress where they changed the town ordinance and they could have a holding tank for the sewerage. Which again was against town policy.
I just, I just wanted you to know that, or wanted everybody to know that. With those facilities, like Frenchville has an agreement with IFNW, that's an IFNW boat launch. We have one with the Department of Conservation, that's a DOC boat launch. And Grand Isle, I want to say I believe is a DOC boat launch as well. And so each of those communities have a, have an agreement to maintain. Like for instance, we take care of the small cutting of the lines and stuff like that. But if there's damage to the planks, the ramp itself, the big stuff, if they were to get flooded and damage the facility, those, under the agreement, those costs are, are paid for by, by the agencies.
But the boat launch and the RV parking area are two totally different products.
And if we looked in the sewer, we could tell how many people been there.
Okay, anything else there? Let's keep going.
All right. Moving on to program expenses, tent supplies, a thousand dollars is the same from the previous year. Special programs, three thousand dollars is also the same. American flags, seven hundred and fifty dollars is also the same from the previous year. And Christmas decorations is at eight hundred, the same as the previous year. Totalling program expenses is five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Totalling the budget is four hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and eight dollars. It's up from four hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars.
What's, what's special programs there? What's that, what's that referred to?
That is a, well, so last year we used that to do our trunk retreat for the, for Halloween. Just to get supplies, any special program, I guess, that we want to do throughout the year. Whether it be, Kevin and I had talked about improving the sock, middle school soccer field hill and turning that from rock into grass to make it more, less weeds and make it easier for the guys to mow. So that would be a special program, a very special, yeah, special program. I guess that, that money could come out of there. So that's, the money's there for that.
So it's not necessarily identified yet, it's just?
That's my understanding of it.
Usually we're on holidays, like a Christmas special, Thanksgiving special, we want to bring like Richard and Talon to do science across to the kids or something that, that we use as a special program. Math science, we brought math science in, show the kids all kinds of experiments. That would come out of the special events where the kids gather, but they don't pay a fee. Comes that special event.
Another question.
Yep.
Does the school department play anything for the maintenance of those grounds? Or is it strictly the rec?
They, they take care of their soccer fields, but there is, so one soccer field.
Okay.
We do take care of the school grounds and the mowing and the trimming as well. And so.
Why doesn't it come out of their budget?
That's, I've, I've inquired about that and it's a complicated issue. Maybe Gary can shed some light on it. I, I just, I got a.
Seriously?
I, I got a complicated answer, I guess, so I, I didn't, my, my questions didn't get resolved, but. but that's something that I've wondered as well, because it doesn't seem like it's fair to us, to the town, that we provide these services and then that they don't pay their fair share. So it's brought up, it's been brought up, but I guess it's, hasn't, hasn't gotten resolved. So that's, that's the answer I got.
So Sam, within the next fourteen days, you think you could get the figure for me from the Madawaska PD? Cause they're the ones that have the records on that. How many times that that park has been used in the last three years, usually?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
In addition to this in your budget, the department has self-funded programs.
Yep.
That, that page that was provided to you, and in here you can see the program activity, just overall cost, revenues and expenses and what the net is for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, nineteen twenty, and twenty twenty-one, which is what we're projecting.
So, uh, some other departments have some reserve accounts. I guess you can kind of view these as the rec department's reserve accounts in the, in the sense that they are figures that those revenues and expenses kind of just off, like, we spend money to, like, for example, like with activities, we, we spend money to, on, on activities for the kids, but we take in money from the programs that we run, the registration fees that we, that we take in from soccer and baseball and stuff like that, and we use that money to buy equipment, update the equipment, soccer balls and baseball helmets and stuff like that. So it's non, it's a non-taxpayer funded account, all of these are, but they, they carry over from year to year.
The bathrooms or building Bicentennial Park were charged up our youth activities and concessions to. So we have thirty dollars we pay for that, uh, selling slush cookies and chocolate bars and.
Which is not, I mean.
Then got a little school, so we don't know.
It's not what the accounts are there for, but that's what the money was spent for.
Are your hockey players no good? They lost three hundred bucks.
Uh, this is, this is the, the projected revenue for this year. Uh, it's, uh, just because there's a lot of equipment that's lacking, so I projected that we need to revamp that area.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Okay, so, um, self-funded, like for me, like, I'm sorry there, but, like, Dan likes to call me the bean counter. Where are the summer programs covered, the expenses under this? Is that what your youth activity is?
Yes, it is.
So, the fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars of temporary seasonal workers, is that all lawn maintenance? Is that summer programs?
Uh, yeah, seasonal workers for the summer programs or our camp counselors through the six-week programs, they.
So that should be on this side, on this page?
Not necessarily, cause it's all your lawn for the skating rink. Whatever we bring in for skating fees goes to the slush fund, it doesn't come to us.
Well, the slot, like, okay, so are there any wages reflected in this spreadsheet of what these programs actually cost to run? I'm not trying to, I'm just, I need to understand, because for me, this is then not self-funded, because we have staff we're paying. We have all these. So this ninety-three hundred dollars that you're projecting should be going to offset this staff. If we broke out and we put the staff here, your programs are running under. And so do we need to look at charging a little more? I mean, I have no idea. I don't, I don't want to start taking money out of families' pockets, but, um, your, it, I've heard this said so many times in the last few weeks, well, but the rec programs are self-funded, self, they're not, that we have wages, expenses, things that go into these programs. So, um, I'm not trying to pick, I just, should we be charging more?
So do we have a, uh, do we, do we have a figure here?
So besides wages, that's the only thing missing from this equation.
And do we have that figure?
Well, right here?
They, it's in.
Fifty-two is, is inaccurate figure? So basically, you're saying?
We only spent forty of forty thousand of that.
Well, you're asking for fifty-two, so I want to know, is that whole fifty-two for this?
And the reason why he's, I mean, I want to say that.
And I'm not trying to pick on him there.
No, 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 but, but he only spent forty, but I need you to know that. The reason why they didn't spend is because we didn't bring in as much part-time staff, because of the COVID.
COVID, right, right. But I, I, um, listen, I, I look at, I, I look at the fire department and I look at the, the public works who's struggling to keep the roads open, and if there's no roads, nobody goes anywhere, anywhere, right? And the ambulance, and I, I have a very hard time with the amount of wages and everything that's sitting here, the amount of money we spend on the rec if we're not charging enough. Now, if you guys say we're charging enough, if people come back and say, oh, these programs, you know, are costing the families a lot, there's too many families can't afford them, fine, you know, I'll, I'll shut up. But, um, there's a difference between needs and wants. And when everybody's like banging at you to say cut, 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 obviously it's the wants that get looked at the most. So I would just like to know what kind of fees at some point we are actually charging? And, and could we make more money somehow with this, you know, charge people for the trade show? And charge, and I, I guess we're robbing Peter, pay Paul, but.
So to answer your question there, to look at other communities statewide, basically our, our camps are very, very cheap compared to other communities. For our summer camp, just, just for example, I know Diane's daughter in Gray New Gloucester, for the summer camp down there pays sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars per kid, when ours is a hundred dollars. And, and that's not including lunch, breakfast and lunch, and we provide a full breakfast and lunch for the kids. So with that being said, yes, you know, I, I don't know where that right price point is, you know, to, like you said, not to hurt the families and, you know, too much, but I, I do think that the prices could be raised to an amount where, where it offsets at least the, you know, that salary or, so that we're not running under for.
But don't get me wrong, there are people that still think we're, not a lot, but there are some that still say we're overpriced, so.
Overpriced with, with, with reference to what?
Taxpayer money?
No, no, I mean, for their, for their, uh, yeah, yeah.
The tax people, I think we're paying a little bit much.
But Sam, I put the kids go there for free, basically.
But it, but it's a one-person rec department with no building and no, so you, we almost can't compare there and.
We could use work to compare.
Yeah, we could.
If you separated out the parks, you know, and, and I, I did think of that, Ken, cause the, the, a lot of your wages too is in the park maintenance, which is what Gary was getting at, um.
We used to have a park budget and a recreation budget, and that got combined a few years ago, before the year.
How many employees do you have total?
Four full-time employees.
Four full-time?
Yes.
I'll be the first to admit, I'm sixty-five years old, I'm old schooled. When we were growing up, there was minimal rec, but for certain individuals, we had to come home right after school, cause we had chores to do. So, you know, try to understand, I'm coming from that end. But I, but I understand that today, the entire world is more recreation-minded than it ever has been. Personally, I think it's gone a little bit overboard. I would hate to see the day that as a selectman, that I have to sign my name on a document saying that we're going to terminate an individual's unemployment. But I hope you can understand that when it comes to, are we going to purchase a badly needed fire truck? Or an ambulance, or whatever the case might be, a real need versus something that we could do without if we had to. Does that make any sense? Well, when making the budget for the rec, please keep that in mind.
I wasn't going with, with that, which I respect. I just, I, I, I feel like we need to, I don't want to charge seventeen hundred dollars either, but I mean, does it make sense that taxpayers are paying this much money and that we only have to, we only charge a hundred dollars? Like, I, I don't know, I mean, if I'm out of line.
That's a pretty big figure there, from what I can see. You're talking forty plus forty-two hundred in red there, right? If you're considering the estimated figure that they're giving us.
Yeah.
But you're putting all those wages in summer, which, which isn't, half those wages go in the wintertime also, where we don't get those funds, it goes into the general account. Whatever we collect for skating fees, which we need to have staff on, we don't get those funds. Those go in the general account. So how do you think we're going to pay our staff who don't get those funds?
So what you're showing here for income?
Is five hundred bucks. For skate rink, it's five hundred bucks.
Right.
We don't see the.
That, that's just renting a pair of skates for a dollar, but the, the fees that come into skate.
When I hear self-sufficient, I look at the total cost. The total cost would include labor, it would include the cost of maintaining the restrooms and everything in my life. That's, you know, when I, I run the ice cream truck, I just think about the cost of buying ice cream. You know, I had cups to buy and straws to put out there, napkins to put up there, that's whole kit and caboodle. So when you look at these things, and when I, that's why we had asked, back with the earlier budget process, we had to see revenue side, because we need to know what revenues are offsetting the expenses. And this is clearly a large separation, right? I don't see where, and I'm not attacking at all the rec, I'm just suggesting that we probably do need to look at the way we're structuring our fees. If this is going to be feasible, we've got to make it feasible and worthy for the taxpayers. And right now, based off what I've seen, the significant cost that taxpayers put on some of these programs.
Thirty-five thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars a month.
So when you look at, for example, hockey, it's two years in a row we've taken a negative hit on the hockey program. And I don't know what the cost is to buy a hockey program. Maybe those individuals that want to play hockey would have to shell some more of the money, I don't know, but. Probably in a time where money wasn't so utterly important, this may not have any problem. But I think right now, we, we really, I would challenge the entire group that, you know, whether it's you set your budget and you determine if it's a reasonable budget, I would encourage you all to look at that and recognize that these are a little bit desperate times. Today, we, we're, we have a somewhat neutral budget before us right now, right? There's a proposed budget with a little bit of savings here. But keep in mind that if you're going to sustain tax rate over the next several years, you can't address it as the year approaches, you gotta be forth, you gotta be forthright. Think about what's going to happen next year. This may get worse next year. Right here, you can solve it today, this year. Next year may not be that same thing, so. Again, I support it.
Like, the four of us today, I'll spend the whole afternoon plus more putting up tents for the Chamber of Commerce for their pre-market. That, that's our labor, that's our cost, but when we get out of that, absolutely nothing, so. So we don't do just run the pre-k or whatever until the kids, we do a lot more.
And that's why I was saying.
Yeah, can I say something, Doug?
Your budget, but I think this group, to help us know really what the true cost is for a taxpayer, we have a, a great Chamber of Commerce, you know, we have a great Acadian Festival.
Yeah, you, well, people know how much we.
Exactly. I know what the cost is to these, to this group, I know it. That's a significant amount of resource, it's a significant amount of money. And if they were to turn around and bill us, I'm going to jump ten feet high, like, cause now I got a budget. But so it's. Right, so I just, maybe some of the way we're dealing with things throughout all of these budgets, parts and pieces, when it comes to setting up tents for this or that, or loading up buildings for nonprofits or whatever, we can only do that for so much. Everybody's going to come knocking looking for a handout. And we can do what we can, but I think we're at a point where we are doing more than we can. And we need to look at that a little bit closer, that's all I'm saying. And it's not just for that, it's global.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I got something real quick. So, I, I definitely think we should go back to separating parks and recreation so we can really get good numbers, because again, maybe some of that temporary seasonal staff could be working with the, the fields and the parks and that. I do know, I'm, I'm a young family, I have two young kids. I can tell you right now for a fact that my son was not prepared to go to school this, the first year he went to school. He was shy, he refused to talk to anybody in public, he was very reserved, and you couldn't bring him anywhere, you couldn't do anything with him. I signed him up for the recreation program, and when he came out of that first year recreation, he was a totally different kid. The staff there cares about the kids, they work with the kids individually, and I don't think this is something we need to pull from the kids. I definitely think we need to look at the revenue and look at how we're charging things, and also look at how the rec is being charged, because, you know, they get charged for things like using the school gym when they need it, which is something that it's a town department, why, you know, why is one town department charging the other for things like this? But I definitely think we need to review the fee schedules, we need to review, you know, the, the seasonal work and, and assign it to the programs. But I definitely don't think that a town that's trying to attract young families should, if anything has to be cut, sure, we can work on that, look at that. But I'm just saying, let's first look at the fees for the summer camp, let's look at the fees for, for the ice skating, and let's make sure they get those fees. If they're charging for ice skating and they're paying labor, it shouldn't be going to a slush fund, it should be going to cover the cost of the labor first. You know, those are all things we should look at before we start looking at, let's get rid of hockey, or let's get rid of baseball. Let's make sure everything can officially, effectively self-fund itself. And maybe baseball has to fund hockey, because baseball takes more money.
You're on everything and.
I, 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 I commend you for, 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 for that, and I know that you are, but I guess really what I'd like to see is, is if you could maybe get a, in contact with a couple of schools and see how their fee structures work for some of their activities, if we're somewhat in line. I, I think we need to keep track a little bit closer of your actual expenses. I mean, we're, we're not putting the labor cost where it belongs here. The labor cost is just general and, and we don't know where it is. You're putting tents up for the chamber, you have no idea what, what your actual cost is, you did it. And I'm sure the chamber's happy that you did it, but, but somehow, somebody should keep track at least of the hours and how many people were there, so.
Well, look in the minutes, I went to the casino's town manager, because she had asked us to do that, and it took me like a couple of months, and I got it all done through the team of the labor of every single program we had.
So why did we stop?
She asked me a one-time deal, give it or I didn't.
I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I'd like to just see, like, it, it's not a hard thing to really break down if you really take a look at it. And I think it would help you guys too, if, if you had a good idea of where your actual costs are, you know? We can start looking at revenue, we can start, you know, if you make a few phone calls to some of the school departments, find out what they're charging for a soc- a soccer program at, at whatever age.
In our skating, otherwise than that, soccer, basketball seminars, well, we're there, he's the cultural assistant, we, he takes a team, I take a team, we each other, soccer, we got what, eighty?
Well, I, I, I guess I'm, I, I, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning what you two are doing or, or what your staff is doing, but are you in line in charging the individuals the right amount? You know, are we getting enough money, enough income to, to, to?